And the meeting is live.
You're muted Rebecca.
Rebecca, you're muted.
Interesting, that was unmute, mute, unmute. So, thank you again Ms. Barney.
You're welcome.
Good evening and welcome to a virtual meeting of the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commissions. We are living in extraordinary times. The Ohio Legislature passed several emergency laws to address the pandemic, including the ability for public entities to have virtual meetings. We appreciate this ability to maintain our continuity of government. For the present time, we are holding our meetings online and live streaming those meetings on YouTube, which you can access on the city's website. To submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form under the streaming video on the city's website. These questions and comments will be relayed to the commission by the meeting moderator. We welcome your comments want to and want to accommodate public participation to the greatest extent possible. Please use a valid name and address when submitting your comments and refrain from making any inappropriate comments. This is not a perfect system, but we will do our best in these difficult times and we certainly appreciate your patience. At this time, will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance those participating? If you could unmute your microphones and turn your video off as the flag is displayed.
I pledge allegiance.
Thank you, everyone. Ms. Beal, can I turn some time over to you for a roll call?
Mr. Suplack?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Mr. Fishman?
Here, I thought, sorry.
Okay, Ms. Call?
Here.
Mr. Snare?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Do I have a motion to accept the documents into tonight's record?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Snare?
Yeah.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
Thank you again, Ms. Beal. Planning and zoning commission is responsible for review of the code updates and to provide recommendations on next steps. Our first item on the agenda tonight is property maintenance code maintenance code update 20-097 ADM-C for an informal review. This application is a request for a review and informal feedback for an amendment to section 153.076 of the City of Dublin zoning code to provide regulations for enforcement procedures and additional property maintenance regulations. Ms. Noble, do you have a presentation for us tonight? I'll give you a moment to share your presentation with us. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Can everyone see what I see?
Not yet.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm running out of options here.
You may need to turn your video off before presenting. Occasionally, different systems will have that requirement.
Okay. Is that any better?
No. Claudia, Jenny, does Tammy have rights to present in the meeting?
Hit this button, the green one. They just asked a question.
Me?
Yes. Where's the presentation? Scroll down. You have too many things open, I think. Where's the presentation? Why don't I see it?
Sorry. You have a question for me?
I did.
Open it again.
Tammy's just struggling with her presentation, so we wanted to ensure that she had rights, permission to.
Yep, that's all enabled, yes.
Thank you. Or does anyone else have a copy of the presentation that could present from a different participant? Get that Claudia over Tammy's shoulder, helping her. Would the commission be interested in changing the order of tonight's cases and going to as we resolve the issue with one?
I'm good.
All right. Ms. Noble, if that's all right with you, if we flip over to Ms. Roush for the sign code update, item number two. Coming back to item number one later in the agenda?
Yeah, of course.
Jenny, looks like we have sign code update case number 20-098 ADM-C for administrative review. This application is a request for a recommendation of approval to city council for an amendment to sections 153.150 through 153. And 164, I imagine, of the City of Dublin zoning code to provide regulations for temporary sign requirements. So Ms. Roush, I will turn time over to you. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. And as you mentioned, this is an administrative review. And we are not, I'm going to go through what our previous discussions were in a little background and then go through the proposed regulations. And depending on our discussion, our goal tonight would be for you to make a recommendation to city council. But again, we'll go through it and then we'll get to that as we move forward. So, as you recall, this amendment is to focus on temporary sign regulations as it relates to a decision of the Reed B. Gilbert case, which is making sure that regulations for temporary signs are focused on addressing time, place, manner, and obviously not content or messaging. So needing to update our sign regulations to be in alignment with that. We're not proposing any changes to the permanent sign code at this point. Again, just focusing on the temporary signs. So, we reviewed this topic with the Community Development Committee of Council back in November. They provided some directions, their direction to staff and legal to make some modifications and bring that forward. And as you recall, in June, early June, the commission, as well as the Architecture Review Board, had some informal discussion on this topic related to the draft ordinance that we brought forward to you at that time. And since then, we have made modifications based on the commission and the board's feedback, which included modifying, and we had a lot of discussion about the non-residential for sale for lease signs. That was our biggest topic area and we made changes to that, which I'll review. Also, just looking at general clarification and making sure that the color requirements are clear within the code and we're not creating any conflict. Also adding duration requirements where that is needed. And then adding regulations to then permit sandwich board signs citywide. That was something that the commission and the board felt strongly about including, so we have included that as well. And then obviously any general sort of clerical things to update, which we have done. And then doing some research to see what other communities have and how that really plays into the non-residential sign in particular, and also then on that same topic, talking to economic development to see what their thoughts and concerns were related to the draft regulations. So we made all those changes, took that to the Architecture Review Board on the 12th of this month. And they reviewed that, made some very minor changes, and that is the draft that we have provided to all of you. So they made a recommendation of approval with some minor changes. And then, as I said, the draft that's before you tonight is a reflection of their discussion as well. So, we can handle this however you want. I mean, we've included the definitions part of the code, the whole set of definitions, so you can just get a sense for all the definitions. We really added and tried to make sure that those are clear between the code and the code requirements. And any definitions that previously had code requirements in there, we then, I took those and put those in the actual regulations. Because that's really challenging sometimes when the definition includes a regulation that really should be in the code part. So, I've included that along the way as well. So the first, you know, significant number of pages is the definitions part, but we just wanted you to see that all of those and how those fit together. The true regulations that we're discussing tonight are towards the end of your packet of materials, starting on page 11 with the temporary signs. So, I mean, it's pretty a short section, so if it's okay with you, I might just go through them and then we can talk about each section as we go. And you can raise questions as well. So, if we're starting with the temporary signs on page 11, I added, in blue, you'll see that, the allowance for a banner to be permitted in that time period where a sign, permanent sign has been approved, but they're not installed yet. So we have that in a number of instances where businesses would want to include or have a banner, you know, saying what's coming, the business that's going to be there, but they just don't have a permanent sign yet. So, I included that because that's something that we discussed, excuse me, as part of our previous meeting. And then I also added the size and height, which is not new. I took it from the end of the sign code and just put it up towards the beginning again, so all the requirements are together. So for banners, excuse me, that's the improvement that I've made at this point. Are there any questions about that?
Jenny, I'm just trying to track where you're at on 11. Are you in definitions or are you actually into the code?
Sorry, I'm in the actual code.
Okay.
I wasn't going to go through the definitions unless anybody had any questions, because I didn't make any true changes to that.
I just have a few questions at the end about it, but.
Okay, yeah, let's come back to that at the end then, if you don't mind.
Now, just for clarification, that page 11 for us in our packet appears to be, let's see, what page is this? Of course, 45 of 59 in the draft document that we have.
In the digital version, yes, you're right. If you're looking at it that way, it is page 40, 45 is what I have, yeah. Okay, so I'll take it there's no true questions about that. We can always come back if there is. So, following that then, under the construction trailer sign, again, that requirement was within the definition. So I just added it here under the code requirements itself, because that made sense about construction fencing of being allowed to have those decorative wraps, and that's not considered a sign. In terms of then the development period sign, I really just clarified and added just some clarifying language, just to be clear about what we were asking. I really didn't change any of the content related to the development period sign.
So can I ask you, Jenny, on the development, just can you give us an example, really? It just popped out of my head. For instance, let's say we have development of a really large developer who is going to be developing for months on end, different pieces and parts. What's the limitation on the development sign that wouldn't be, just become a permanent sign that might be there for a very long time?
It could be, they have to get approval every year for this sign type under the duration part. So they would have to request approval for that to be extended every year. It also has in here that, you know, 170% of the lots have been sold, then they have, or have occupancy, excuse me, then they have to remove that sign. So it can't be there indefinitely. But again, depending on the length of, you know, how long it takes to develop out a particular subdivision, it could be a period of time, but that is on an annual basis.
Jenny, those signs, I guess it's an enforcement then, because some of those signs tend to become permanent. I remember the sign on Avery Road, right past the shopping center, the guy's got a piece of land there, and it used to say some decorating, some company, for years, years and years, that sign was there. It became pretty dilapidated, and I think it fell down eventually. But it's, what kind of, I mean, temporary signs are okay if they're really temporary. But it seems to me some of these signs become permanent. A lot of them do, I think.
Well, again, I think that's, as you said, some of it may be an enforcement piece of this. And this development period sign is really for residential development. So it's, again, I'm not sure of your specific example, so that may fall.
I think it was for residential. It was the piece right past the commercial on the right-hand side. It's still an empty lot, but there was a sign there for many years.
There still is, there still is one sign on the northeast corner of the roundabout at Post. Yeah, it's been here as long as I've been here. It's the same sign, the developer's name starts with a P. I'm not remembering it right off the top of my head, but it's still there.
Very good, Rebecca. That's the one. That's the one, yeah.
Now, it says here that you have to have a building, an active building permit. So, that particular property wouldn't have an active building permit, even if it were residential development, if there's nothing been on it for a long time. So that would become enforcement then, not, so what about subdivisions that have been, what determine you saying no after a year? A subdivision that hasn't truly reached 75% over a couple, two, three-year period? Or what would be, should we write criteria as to when you can?
I wonder, I wonder actually if, how about this, that sign is not a development sign, that's a vacancy, that's a, that's a sales.
It's a for lease or build.
Which is a separate.
That falls into this. Yep, but the language on that one is duration such signs shall be permitted for 30, and the language is a little bit odd here, 30 number of days contiguous, contiguously, and no more than 90 total days in a calendar year.
That's right. That's a totally different sign. So we'll get to that one. This is for, again, for a development, a period under which something is being developed and then being allowed to do that. Again, we typically would give people, you know, the leniency to, if they're not 75% or greater, they would be allowed to keep that. Because again, a lot of that is related to the market and, you know, timing of things being constructed. So, I don't know, how do you put your camera on? Do you have any other thoughts or things to point out here?
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear as well that some of the sign types that we're talking about, the track changes is from our previous discussion. It's not from the current code as it exists. So, some of the sign types that we'll be talking about, there may not be an analog currently. And so, you know, questions of enforcement are yet to be seen, because so much of this language will be altogether new for these time-activated signs, the development period sign, the leasing period sign are kind of new ways of looking at this, where the previous temporary sign code has been more content-based, which is why we're having this discussion to get into compliance with REED.
Thank you. I do want to make sure that all of the items that are concerning to the commission are addressed in the draft code. So the recommendation is going forward to city council as discussed both previously and currently. So it's good callouts that Mr. Fishman, you know, bringing forward some things that don't portray the look of Dublin that we want to portray. So those items of note, while, you know, general, excuse me, specific parcels help us internalize and understand what those items are. We're talking generally, we're not picking on any one parcel. It's just we have examples of issues that are examples. All right, so Jenny, any other questions on the development period signs? Any need for feedback on that part? There's not a lot of language changes in our red line document on that one.
And I mean, again, from the previous version, that requirement is in there currently, in the current code. So, it's more specific to residential though, whereas Thad is saying this is more generally, you know.
Is there, is there any reason, is there any reason we don't specifically say residential development period signs or include that in it more intentionally? I'm asking, I'm not necessarily advocating. Does it, does it offer ambiguity the way it's written if we don't put the word residential somehow in it?
My guess is that's sort of getting to the content piece of this, right? That you're making the sign specific, I don't know, am I?
I think it's location. I don't think it's content.
Yeah.
And then the other one that I'd like feedback on is we do have a size in there, 32 square feet, and not to exceed eight feet in height. I know that was a subject of discussion last time. Are those measurements acceptable to the commission?
And I guess on that point, maybe, just because there was a question about making sure that these signs do not permit more than what they would be allowed in a permanent state, and 50 square feet is our max height for a ground sign. Just, and just for your awareness, I guess. So it's underneath the threshold of what would be permitted permanently. I'm not saying it's the right number, but that was the question raised.
So, can we beta test this against, let's just beta test it against a park condominium development. I'm just thinking scenarios that maybe we haven't had. It's easy to look at subdivision residential, but we're having different kinds of residential. So, I'm just kind of curious how that would work in an urban setting with a size like that. I mean, do we? Because really, in the past, we've used to utilize these out in the suburbs, in the outer areas of the city, in the perimeter. But now we're looking at more of a urban setting and more of this higher density stuff. And I'm just wondering, does it still work there? Can we beta test it in discussion?
Additionally, additionally, Ms. Fox, we also call out there the count. So your point of condominium complexes, if there are many streets in that condo complex, the code allows for one sign of a maximum of 32 square feet on each street frontage. So if we had many, many streets, they could have a 32-square-foot sign on each of those street furnitures.
Yeah, I just think as we, you know, I think all of these are great moves towards controlling sign clutter. But I think we need to kind of try to think of the worst case scenario and beta test it against what happens if this guy wants it. I mean, what if, you know, and in these urban areas, these are pretty good sized signs.
Yeah, I mean, that's good discussion.
I agree. And not only, I think the size is very important in the urban areas, but also, when I drove around, a lot of those signs get pretty shabby. And we talked about frame sides better, these signs that are on fiber board, you know, after some weather, they get pretty bad-looking. And if they can keep them up for a year, at the end of that year, they're, you know, they don't reflect what Dublin should be.
So Ms. Roush, can you speak to upkeep? That isn't typically addressed in the signed code, but as far as code enforcement, things have to be in good repair and not a safety hazard and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I mean, again, it would be looked at on a case-by-case basis, and I think maybe that's something then for maybe some consideration. And maybe we could look at, you know, is there something in here that adds a little more language to the material quality similar to what we did with some of the, that non-residential version of this? I guess I'd have to look at that. I mean, the challenge, I think, and we discuss that at ARB, is, you know, to what extent are we requiring certain materials? Because the intent of these is to be, while sometimes they're there longer, the intent is to be temporary. So requiring some potentially owner-assigned cost in a temporary condition. Again, we're trying to balance, we're trying to balance all these factors. So again, I'm not saying we can't look at what that might be.
But don't you think that a little better quality will relieve some responsibility on enforcement? And so, we let them put up a fiber board sign, we know that 30 days of rain, that's not going to look the way it did when they put it up. And so that's, if you drive around, especially in the commercial areas, that's what you see. You see a fiber board sign on a couple four-by-fours. And so, I thought we talked about in our earlier discussion, I read here about frame size and smaller signs.
Well, again, we didn't focus that discussion on this particular sign type. So again, I made changes to the other sign. But that's not to say that, again, if the discussion consensus tonight is we want this to be more similar in terms of number than, or materials or, you know, duration and what that looks like, or make that clear, then we can definitely look into that. I'm not opposed to that. I just off the top of my head, I don't. I don't know, okay.
Yeah, all right. So going back to item D, the development period signs. I think Ms. Fox made a very good point to, the term she used was beta test. So if you could put your analytical brains on and read through that and take it for worst-case scenario, are these terms acceptable? Do we want to make any other recommendations? Do we want to increase, decrease, call out quality of repair, that sort of thing? Mr. Snare?
I would note, I won't tell you how far back you have to scroll on this, but there is, development period sign is now a defined term as well, and it doesn't relate specifically to residential. It's temporary sign for the alteration of a public or private premises. So it's not limited to residential for, whether that should be changed or not.
So Mr. Fox, looking to you for some advice there. Is there, we're looking at this from a residential perspective. Do we need to look at it from a broader perspective, or do we need to change the definition so that our lenses match the intent?
Well, I think, maybe I'll let Thad chime in here, but if you look at this, it's saying approvals are for a year. And then it's also then saying in residential subdivision. So it's not saying it's specific to residential, it's saying here's the duration requirement. But in a residential setting, there is this extra layer of requirement, and that's how our current code reads also.
So Jenny, in that case, and don't get me wrong, I was keying in on that reference to residential there. I guess I'm going to, so the way some of this code reads, and I think what Jane might have been alluding to, right? This reads maybe appropriate for and controlled for a single commercial parcel which has street frontages. But when we have a development with a wealth of parcels, is this adequate? Does this hem us in, or does this suddenly start to proliferate signs? You know what I mean? If we were to really take it at the way it's written? Maybe that's a question for Thad or Jenny. Those two scenarios, like a single parcel, this could probably be good for us? If it's a wealth of residential parcels or residential development, is this doing what it needs to do?
So I think that in terms of that question, one of the criterions, one of the criteria for this sign type is that you have an active building permit for the premises. So as you point out, if it is a single large project on a single parcel, which is really what this was built, you know, what this is designed to address. If you have a residential subdivision that maybe has 100 If you have a residential subdivision that maybe has a hundred parcels, um, is each one of them going to have its own, you know, built by ABC construction sign? Is that kind of what you're asking?
Yes. I mean, here's the thing, there's through a residential subdivision, there's a wealth of, there's a wealth of uh, public frontages, street frontages, right? All of a sudden, because you have the internal streets, the external streets and/or you have a wealth of building permits, you have a wealth of parcels. So yes. I mean, is it, you know, I, I think, I, I think it's sort of straddling. I think it's right now a little bit confused about what it's trying to do. Is it trying to control the single parcel? Or is it trying to control the, the residential subdivision? And, and I don't, I don't know that we necessarily want proliferation of these signs on every parcel in a subdivision that has a street. Um, so are we, are we sort of missing? Missing the mark on one or both, right? Do we have to, do we have to pick a lane left or right on this and then write, write something for the other one?
Right. Plus the urban issue too, because we do have, you know, let's say in, in Bridge Park where they have quite a few condominiums, uh, it may, it may, um, it may be up for a very, very long time on each street frontage. I, I, yeah, I, I think maybe we just need some specific variations of circumstance of where these might be placed.
And I think, and maybe Jenny, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The initial discussion of this sign type and when we were reorganizing code in this way, were we thinking necessarily about? I don't think that we were thinking about this as being on individual parcels of property when they're developing a residential subdivision. We can clean that up so that it's, um, you know, in an approved, each, maybe each PUD gets a certain number. So that it's not every single parcel that has an active building permit in that subdivision. And I think that this was also trying to, um, get at if there is, um, an existing building that's being remodeled and it has the building permit. You know, oftentimes there'll be a, a sign out front, you know, work done by ABC, um, remodelers. And so perhaps what we do is, is break that down, um, into those separate circumstances and also give some thought to these multi-unit buildings. Uh, so that, as you say, we don't have proliferation of signs. Cause I think that the concern that commission is driving at in all of these regulations is just this, the visual clutter, the ability to see our traffic signs clearly. These sort of community aesthetic issues, um, which at the end of the day are what, what we have to rely on to justify regulating signs at all.
Yeah. And quality and repair, I think are the only other things that I would call out.
Right. And, and also you.
Quality or repair. Um, that would be applicable to maybe a minimum that's applicable to all of the temporary sign types. And then to the extent that any of them need something with more, you know, something greater, we can be specific to that. I know one of them that we'll get to is the, the sandwich board that have specific materials that are not permitted. But we can have just a general statement in there, all temporary signs must be, you know, maintained in good repair, color fast material, that sort of thing.
Can you, can you also tether it? Is there merit? Cause you have a wealth of different dur- durations for temporary signs, right? This one is, is now a year. Can you also somehow tether it effectively to the, the total duration? So and I don't know what it is. I'm just, I'm just wondering if a material's appropriate to maintain its uh, quality for the duration of its, you know, temporary existence, which, you know, the difference between a 30, a 30 day sign. We don't need to hem somebody into a 30 day, uh, upscaled materials for a 30 day sign. Right. Versus the year sign, I guess is what I'm getting at.
So Mr. Superlack, if we coupled that with, uh, minimum quality that, that Mr. Boggs touched on earlier and either decrease the time from year to six months, the minimum quality that we are requiring has to last six months. And so their period of approval has, you know, i- is at six months and an inspection is required. So if it's not in, in good repair, then they either need to remove or replace. Would that be sufficient?
All right. If you're asking me, I thi- I think so. I think there's merit to, we have different durations. We have to be conscious of it. We don't need to, you know, shoehorn everybody into the, the best quality when their duration is a short, is short-lived. So if we're somehow tying those together, um, I think it's, I think it's really appropriate. And there is something, I, I'll say this, there is something here to say about, you know, a lot of times sandwich boards are not, they might be covered by an awning, they're not fully weathered, whereas other ones are. So I, again, I'm, I'm deferring, I'm just pointing it out that, uh, a year in exposed weathered conditions is very different than, you know, a sandwich board that sits under an awning for a, you know, covered from the elements type of thing.
All right.
Whatever merit that is relative to the sort of re-scripting of this.
So for the development signs, specifically the development period signs, um, I'd like to make a recommendation that we decrease the, the time period to six months from one year. Since there are some developments that are, you know, short-lived, Jane points out, you know, there are some others that are very, very long. But if we require minimum quality to, um, something that we know as a commission is high quality, not super expensive for a developer, but will last the term of six months in the elements in a, you know, for climate environment. What I don't want to do, what I'm fearful of, and, and I think Mr. Superlack was somewhat alluding to this is somewhat of matrix. So if you choose this quality, then your time, inspection time or duration time is X. If you choose this other thing, then it's Y. And I think that's very hard to maintain. And as new quality comes up, we have to append and alter the matrix. I'd like to stay away from that if we could. So if we could do the minimum standard and have the duration match that minimum standard, then the only inconvenience is a person who otherwise would have had it inspected once in a 12 month period of time now has to have it twice. But they put in higher quality material than what was required. And so it lasted the year. So it's a very minor inconvenience. So Ms. Fox, it looks like you're, you're pensive there.
I, I, I'm going to play devil's advocate like I'm the developer doing the subdivision and six months isn't going to give me enough time to get these houses sold. And, um, and I don't want to, I think we all, um, understand that in the economy, it's difficult to, to survive. And I don't want to see sign clutter. So to me, um, I want to just be sure we don't have too much sign clutter, reduce it. I want to make sure that the sign is maintained in a condition that looks good from the street and stays that way. But I don't want to get, I would, I would be a little bit leery of adding too much, um, re-inspection, too many parameters. I think that we can, can describe intent and objective in a general way. And when, um, when the sign comes up for, and I think that we have to have a process in, in our enforcement area that these signs don't become ignored, um, and let go for year after year after year. That's part of our enforcement effort. I just don't want to make these things too difficult. I want to get the result we're looking for done without becoming too complex in doing it.
Well, so, so let me, let me piggyback and say, so don't get me wrong. I'm not at all advocating for a matrix relative to these things. But if we go through all this long list of sign types, their duration is all different. And so relative to, if we have to go through and, and start stipulating quality measures on every one, I think, uh, to the point of that's going to get too specific and too, um, too problematic. Whereas if we can somehow articulate, and again, I, I don't know what this, how this will script out. But if we can somehow articulate that the materials selected have to be commensurate with the, uh, with the duration associated. So it's a general and broad brush about materials and duration tethered together in an effective manner. Then that sort of houses all of them for appropriate measures of, of, you know, I mean, for all the different, um, temporary signs. But there is something to duration and or weather, like that we have to be conscious of if we're going to start talking quality of temporary signs.
Right. And Mr. Superlack, I, I concur with that. I misunderstood what you were saying. I am, I, I'm trying to keep us focused just on the first sign type, the development period signs. And so because that's where my brain was, I misunderstood. So, uh, going back to development period signs, I have no issues and I fully support the, if the period is one year, then the quality of the sign has to be equal to that one year. So as far as the language goes, um, Ms. Roush, if you could a- address the language, uh, sign size. Are there any other callouts there, Mr. Grimes? I, I saw your hand go up a while ago, but we had many people talking. Did you still have?
And when you were talking about whether this applies to residential or commercial, I think you want to keep it open enough. Uh, because you may have a hybrid property that has a little bit of both. So, you know, to get too specific gets you too far into the weeds. So I think you want to be able to use this to apply to a development. Whatever that is.
Thank you.
Commercial, residential or both. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Always appreciate the refocus. All right. Any other callouts on the development period signs? Mr. Fishman?
Uh, maybe I'm off a little bit, but we, we didn't really nail down the number of signs. It doesn't seem necessary to have more than in a development, one temporary sign that says it's John Jones Development Company. Not one on every house or every street. And we talked briefly about every street. And I think that's something we've got to nail down. Also, um, I've been, I, when you drive around, you see those subdivisions that have all these spec houses and they have for sale signs on them, which are legal, you know, for sale signs. But they also have other signs, temporary signs on the for sale signs and say, no down payment, you know, 30 days, duh, 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 2.9%. So I, I, we haven't talked much about that. So I thought I'd.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. The draft does call for, um, does allow for rather, uh, one sign per, per frontage. So long as they have 100 feet of street frontage. That does for those larger developments that have many, many street furnitures does seem like it could get quite cluttered to me. So looking for the, the commission's feedback on, is there a maximum cap? Are we, um, are we okay with the 100 feet of frontage? Are there any situations? Again, Jane pointed out, you know, can we beta test? Put our thinking caps on and look at some of the recent, uh, historical applications that we've had and apply this code at that 100 feet with the, the sign of the sign and see if that's something that you would be proud to have Dublin call home.
You know, the, the other thing that I'm thinking about and, um, the, the frontage system makes sense if we're talking about a large parcel, it's maybe going to have a big office building or something on it. But if we're talking about a parcel that's being subdivided, there are streets that are going to be platted and constructed. But they won't really be accepted by the city until they have been constructed. I'm, I'm wondering if just the timeline of that from a practical perspective might alleviate some of those concerns about internal, you know, what ultimately will be internal streets in a subdivision. Um, so we can look at just that practical standpoint.
So, um, but yeah, if you could, uh, provide some clarity, so the language that I've used in the past is dedicated, once the streets are dedicated. However, there are some times where the streets aren't going to be dedicated because they are private streets. But they would be large enough that they, um, would qualify for a sign. So how do we call out language wise that the street has been dedicated to the city? Or has been accepted as a private road? How, how do we distinguish that language? And again, you know, we're not nailed down, this is what we're going to do, but how would we do it?
Well, so for example, in division four here under development signs, it talks about 100 feet of frontage on each of two public rights of way. So your private streets then are out and until the street has been accepted, it's not a public right of way. There has to be a dedication and an acceptance. And, and generally when the city reviews plaids that dedicate, um, road, one of the conditions of acceptance and the conditions of, um, approval of the overall zoning plan is going to be that they are built to standard. Engineering inspects them before they are actually made into public streets. And I think the sequence of events there, um, between when houses are built, when the streets are fully fledged public rights of way, and when the houses would gain occupancy as a practical matter may keep you from having signs sprinkled through every under construction subdivision.
Yeah, understood. The, the only concern that I have is, um, you know, Jane put the developer hat on before. I'm going to put the developer hat on now. If I know that this street is going to be a public right of way and I am building it, that's what it is to me already. So can we strengthen up the language if the commission chooses to do this? Can we strengthen up the language that says, you know, dedicated and accepted public right of way? Or something that makes it clear to a developer so the developer doesn't think that he's completely in the right or she's completely in the right because she, he or she has, uh, this right of way area and is putting a sign on it. And we come and say, nope, can't do that because of the sequence of events.
Well, and before they put a sign out too, under this, they're going to have to apply for, for and receive a permit. So planning is going to be reviewing and say, madam developer, um, I understand that these will be streets, but right now they are not because this is all still under, um, construction and, or, you know, we haven't inspected yet and sign off on the improvement. So they're not public rights away. I'll, I'll approve your sign permit for the perimeter streets, but all of your internal streets are not yet public.
And honestly, I think, I don't think they're trying to circumvent it to get them throughout the neighborhood. To me, when I read this, and if we're thinking about practical examples like Tartan Ridge, for example, that has multiple entrances. So I think part of that, again, and that's more of the suburban model, which really doesn't get to what Ms. Fox was suggesting in a more urban model, what does that look like? So I, I think we can, I think pictures maybe and some examples of what we're talking about specifically. And then how to tighten that language up would maybe be helpful for us when we review this again next time to make sure we're all talking about this.
Uh, additionally, I think there's, there's a difference between a sign on an arterial road because it's a, it's a subdivision and a sign on every single residential street because it has 100 square, 100 feet of frontage. And so the concern is clutter. The concern is not, you know, picking and choosing winners, winners and losers. It's making sure that the clutter is mitigated. Yep. All right. So looking for the commission, uh, Ms. Fox?
Oh, just one quick, I was just thinking, may, maybe it's as simple as saying the developments, um, are limited to the number of signs at one. Two, if you're on two major arterial streets, any additional signs would be considered by the planning department. You know, under their review, but maybe that, maybe it would, maybe, no, no, you shouldn't like that. That's okay.
I mean, I just think that potentially gets us into some, I don't think I want that responsibility, I guess.
Then I like arterial or the major public right of ways. I think you, this is, we all know what we need. I'm sure we can come up with the answer.
Yeah. And again, I think practically speaking, most people only have, you know, one. So again, let us look at what this is happening in real time and bring that back. And then we can have a maybe a little more informed discussion about the number, location, quality. I like all that. So.
All right. Any other callouts on the development signs? All right, Ms. Roush. So next one up is the garage and yard. All right, Ms. Roush. So next one up is the garage and yard.
So for that, again, I did not make significant changes. I just reworded what was already there for the size and height, just to be more direct. And then duration is, I pulled that from the existing definition and just put it in the regulation. So that's not something new. It's what was already there. So any comments, discussion on that?
Yeah. Can I ask a question from just a citizen's perspective? Is it really necessary to get a sign permit for a garage sale?
You're not getting a sign permit. You're getting a garage sale permit. So you have to, when you submit for your garage sale, you have to get approval for that. Again, that's just for our awareness. So people know that this is happening and to prevent people from habitually having a perpetual garage sale. If you want to have signs in the right of way, then you have to have the Dublin, Dublin issued signs. Again, that's the current requirement. So that's, that's pretty, that's been the standard for as long as I can recall.
And to Ms. Fox's point, you know, if I wanted to put a garage sale sign in my own front yard, I think that's very different than I want to use the public right of way on the intersection that's closest to my house that I have no ownership in. So if there's a way for us to.
Yeah, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, I agree with the way that it's written because, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Fox, my audio cut out. I talked over you. I didn't mean to.
No, I didn't. I went, Ms. Call, when you said that, I didn't even realize that those differences existed.
Got it. All right. Any other callouts on garage or yard? All right. Jenny, back to you for gas inflatable signs or devices.
Change my blind so you can see me. There we go. I'll just put my head there. Um, so I didn't make any changes to the gas inflatable signs because there was no recommendation for changes during our last discussion.
Okay. Any callouts from the commission? All right, moving right along.
Okay. Then the model home sign, again, just rewording and taking things from the definitions and then just putting them in the in the code requirement. So I didn't make any substantive changes to that because there was not discussion for that either. And just again, I just, my goal was to try to get all the regulations in the regulations and out of the definitions.
Now, okay, never mind. I was jumping ahead. I have no callouts.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Then the next one is the biggie, is the one we spent a majority of our time talking about. So I went back and rewatched that meeting and discussion multiple times just to make sure, because I feel like we started someplace and then ended someplace a little different. So in the end, we changed, so this is this non-residential sale or leasing period sign. So we changed it to limit it to one sign per parcel, either a ground, a wall, or a window. So wanting to clarify that you, you only get one type on your parcel period. And then under the number three size and height requirements, I then modified that. So it was clear, depending on the type that you chose, what your size and height requirements would be. And then, and so with relation to those, I tried to, again, take into consideration what they would have on a permanent basis because that was discussed significantly. So again, a ground, permanent ground sign for a commercial property is typically 50 square feet. So 32 was, that's what the current code says. And I kept that there again, because that was seemingly underneath that sort of threshold that we talked about. Then for wall signs, I included a maximum area and height for that, as well as in a window sign, as well to try to keep those proportional to where they would be located, either on the building or on the site. And then in terms of duration, when we reviewed this with ARB and had some discussion, again, that's part of our previous discussion, that you would, you would be able to, a person, a property owner would be able to have this for 30 days continuously and not more than 90 days in a calendar year.
Just one lucky item. I, I know it was my word last time, but can we change contiguous to continuous? I was the one who said contiguous.
Got it. Okay. And the materials, I think in the end, I added materials here, but based on our previous discussion, I'm going to take that out and, and make it a more global statement up, up top. So.
And again, I like Mr. Supalak's call out with, you know, this is a 90 day maximum sign. Your sign has to be high qual, high enough quality to be in good repair for 90 days.
Okay. All right. So I'm definitely ready for your feedback on this, whether I'm hitting the mark here or, or you want something else. So.
I, I think the feedback was taken. So I'll go around the commission. Mr. Fishman? Okay, Mr. Supalak? I'm getting a thumbs up, Ms. Kennedy?
Same. This hits the mark for me. Thank you.
And Mr. Grimes. So Jenny, oh, sorry, Ms. Fox. You're right there in the center of my screen.
It's fine. I just, I just wanted to verify on the ground sign, the ground mounted sign, it was originally 16 square foot and four, okay, what was it originally? I guess that's my question.
Yeah. So originally it depended on how much street frontage you had. So if you were less than 100 feet of street frontage, you could have 16 square feet, four feet in height. If your street frontage exceeded 100 feet, then you got 32 square feet and eight feet in area. I mean, again, it's challenging because I'm basically picking a blanket requirement for everybody, no matter their lot size. So.
So why would we just then, why would we then make it 32 square feet for all partial lengths instead of just leaving it? You know, leaving it smaller for a shorter partial length.
I mean, we could do that. Again, I was going with the discussion of having a more concise requirement, but if the group feels that it should be based on, on the street frontage requirements, that's fine with me. So.
I just don't want to, I know we're trying to reduce the number, but I also don't want to then reduce the number and then increase the size of them. So personally, everybody uses the internet to lease anything anyway. I would just like to see the smaller size period and not allow the larger size. I mean.
I mean, I did talk to Colleen, who is the Director of Economic Development about this, just to get her take. And I mean, she definitely felt like this sign, while some people do use the internet and use their office to find that, some businesses do rely upon these signs to be there. So she had concerns about these being eliminated and limited at all. So I think, again, not that she wasn't up for some modifications to this, but I think trying to balance the need for certain property owners to have this type of sign.
So let me, let me ask this quick question, then. Let's beta test this. Brands Road has 14 of these signs from probably Carrick, Carrick Square, all the way to 161. If you count them, there's 14 of them. Are they the 16 square foot ones? Or are they the 32 square foot ones? What's the typical one size?
Because I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can, we could have that information just to be clear next time. And again, if they're, I would want to look too and see, are they all each different property owners that have their, I don't know, I'd have to look.
But, but they pop up. So, I mean, there's so many of them. And I'm just want to be clear about what the size looks like because Friends, Friends Road is a really good example of these signs. And the size is, I think, the smaller ones. So if we go bigger, we might just be making, we might open a Pandora's box we don't want.
Yeah. So I think that's a good point. And I think I, as suggested with the, the development signs, some pictures, I think, and locations of that for everybody's reference, I think would be helpful. So we can.
I, I think Ms. Fox points out an interesting item. Our challenge has been cleaning up the clutter and making sure it's high quality. And this one, I think we, we missed a little bit because we were so concentrated on getting the number down. And some of these parcels have three or four or five of these four by eight signs. So I would be perfectly willing to go back to the 100 foot, four by four. So, you know, the 16 square foot and above 100 feet, the maximum of 32, but still all of the same language.
Okay.
So that four by four sign i- is pretty common. I work on France, well, just off of France Road, I work on Metro Place North. And there are quite a few, a lot of them are the four by fours, but there are quite a few of the eight by four, 32 square foot. Jane, to give you kind of a, a dining room table is about that four by eight square feet. It's one sheet of sheet rock or one sheet of OSB. It's a big sign. But sense for a Cardinal Health building where the sign is set back 45 feet off of the road because of a detention basin or whatnot, it doesn't necessarily make sense for a single quarter acre commercial property that is for lease.
True. And then the other question I'd have for you is on enforcement. How would you ever enforce? How would you ever, who's counting these? I mean, how are we going to enforce this?
I mean, I agree. It's going to be challenging. So I mean, I, I think that's with all of these, to be honest, it is challenging. So I mean, they have to submit a sign permit or a temporary sign permit through our portal. And approval date is included in there and notifications would then be automated that, you know, this, this sign type, you know, this sign permit is tied to this date. And they, I mean, they're going to be able to keep track of that through there. So yes, it is going to be honestly kind of a nightmare. I mean, it's going to be a lot. It's a lot to keep track of. So, but our system is set up that way.
A simple little solution to that. In the corner of the back of the sign, you date it. You date it. You date the sign. It's easy enough to, anybody.
Again, I mean, the permit, when it gets approved, it's going to have a date and an expiration date. And they would go then, I mean, they, their inspections get printed from these, this auto populated list from our system. So it's much easier in this digital format to do that. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's possible. I mean, again, we'll make it work. It's just, it's potentially a lot of keeping track of things. So it is going to be challenging. Yeah.
Mr. Fishman?
I, I got excited because somewhere in this packet, I saw that the sign, that the permit is posted on the right hand corner of the front of the sign. Okay. And I, I think that would be a great requirement because when you drive by, you can see the expiration date on the sign. And there, I saw one like that. So I, I think that would be your, Jane, your idea is great, but I think, I think on the front would be more appropriate. And, and, and we would make enforcement a lot easier because we, I don't know about the whole city, but I know in Mirfield, we get a lot of enforcement from residents. And, and, and so if a resident sees an expired sign, they call in the city and, and something can get done. I don't think that's a hardship on the developer at all.
Yeah. Again, I think that just sort of adds more information to this. Again, I, I think from our perspective in terms of enforcement, it being automated for our inspectors to know what they're looking at is going to make this much more fluid, I guess, is what, where my brain is. But we can, we'll talk about it internally.
Thank you, Jenny.
I, and I, I kind of wonder about infringing upon the, you know, we say that we're permitting a certain message area and then taking that up with a city message. I, I think in practice, it may actually look busier. So it may not achieve the aesthetic results, but I also wonder if it's sort of counterproductive in terms of trying to balance that interest between minimizing visual clutter and allowing people to market their properties without having these signs become permanent fixtures. So the automated system and having that permit process will help because there, as Jenny said, there will be automated ticklers to go out and check these things.
I think we've gone a long way in getting some of this done. And I think we can always come back and revisit too, if we find that the enforcement's not working or, or we're not seeing these signs being rotated out like we're hoping. So, yeah, I think that's, it's a challenge, I know. I hate to see more work for enforcement, but I, but I think that we've, by limiting the number of days, the, the notice is out there. You can't leave these signs up ongoing forever. I'm hoping.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Any other comments from the commission on the residential sale or leasing period signs? So Jenny, do you have enough of our feedback on that one? That was the doozy.
Yeah, no, it's good. No, that was, that's, I'm glad you're all feeling satisfied for the most part with where we landed on that.
All right. Sandwich boards.
Okay. So I inserted this sandwich board requirements and I used what is in the proposed requirements for the historic district update. So, which talks about materials and requiring high quality materials where our current code does not, it would allow you to have like the PVC plastic. This now says that you have to have a wood or metal frame with a chalkboard or a whiteboard. So size requirements, location requirements, one per ground floor tenant is what that current code draft includes as well.
I'm, so kicking us off for discussion, I'm a little uncomfortable with this one because it's one per parcel. And so if you walk to a Kroger, Kroger and every tenant, every ground floor tenant decides to put a sandwich board up, at least the way that I read it, I'm walking down a strip mall and Buffalo Wild Wings and Piata and, 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 and then Bath and Body Works wants to put their special out. It, it's incredibly cluttered. And then it defeats the purpose of having a sandwich board. A sandwich board sign should be that unique, hey, you know, this is, this is something interesting that's happening that we want to draw your attention to. So that requires a sandwich board sign. But if everyone has one, then it's, no one's unique. It's just clutter. So this, this makes me uncomfortable to see it up permitted. You know, of course, it, it requires an application. It requires the, the.
I mean, and that's honestly why it's been only permitted in the Bridge Street District that includes the historic district because it is for more residential and, or excuse me, pedestrian in nature. So it's for, you know, those more urban areas where people are walking by and driving by. It's, it's, this would be a complete deviation from how we currently, currently do things. But again, the consensus last time was that everyone wanted this to be included. So if you all feel like that's not really getting to the point of, you know, what, what you want, I, again, I don't, I'm not sure how you would do that to be fair in any other scenario, right? Because I can't regulate what they're putting on it. I can just say that they have one and what the size is. And, and again, per tenant is the only way that I think it makes sense practically speaking to, to allow this. So I'll leave that up to you all to discuss.
So Ms. Fox, I really like to hear your perspective on this, coming from a city council position where you have conversations, not only with residents, but also business owners. Is there a feeling of we need this? We feel, you know, it's not fair that Bridge Street gets it and we don't? Is there a reason, a compelling reason why we would want to adopt a sandwich board citywide?
You know, to me, the sandwich board discussion came about because in the historic district, we were getting cheesy sandwich board signs. And they looked so tacky, right? And they were everywhere and there weren't very many regulations around them. So my sense is that this really is used more in the, in the more pedestrian, urban, historic, bridge street areas. And that we were just trying to clean up the look of them and put some parameters around them. I don't, I haven't had any comments from anybody outside of that who wants sandwich boards. So I would prefer personally, this is just me, not to include sandwich boards everywhere because I can tell you, even in the historic district, there's one in almost in front of every shop. And and I, and I'd almost like to say that, I'd almost like to say for, for me to take the whiteboard face off and it has to be artistic. I would do it something in the more, can't come from Costco and be plastic, that's for sure. But, but I know Jenny's is very cute and artistic. The candy shop is really cute and artistic. We're looking really for higher quality on sandwich boards and on the, and on the street, in the pedestrian areas, appropriate, but I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily like to see it everywhere else.
Okay. So the rest of the commission, you know, that's mine and Jane's, but Christina, thoughts?
Yeah. I mean, Ms. Call, I'm completely in agreement with you on this, the clutter. I mean, the intent of this is to control sign clutter. That's the intent of this entire discussion, right? I've always been against sandwich boards. I still stand against them. I go to Jason's Deli all the time and. and that jewelry shop right next door has a sandwich board out every time I go there. Um, so I, I don't like the look of it, I think it's cluttered, I think it's messy. Um, I am in support of the direction that Jenny was going with trying to get some standardization around these boards. And so I can agree to that, I think that makes sense generally. But I, I don't think the sandwich boards make sense, make sense outside of, again, the pedestrian friendly. I'm not sure how to put code to that, right? So the one, one stream of thinking that I had going was, is there a way that we can say, if this is really something special that's going to be advertised or some unique, um, thing, it, can we put, I'm going back to duration or timing. Can we say one application per year or is there something in the language there that we can talk about? Where we can limit applicants, for example, I don't know. That would be my question.
So if you all aren't supportive of this, if you're definitely, if you're not supportive of this everywhere, then I guess, and I will wait and hear what everybody else has to say. But my recommendation would be to just remove this from here and we'll leave it in the historic district. In the new code that's being proposed for the historic district and the registry code as it, as it's proposed, I guess.
Yeah.
There's not.
And that was my stance last time too, Jenny, I just want to, just want to clarify that wasn't for it before. But I know my fellow commissioners, some of them are, so I'll let them speak.
So Mr. Fishman, if I could go to you next, what are your thoughts?
I agree with Christine a hundred percent. I, I, in fact, if you drive around Columbus, they're also everywhere, gas stations and, and they consider special, uh, nineteen ninety-five oil change. And, and they're in front of gas stations, I, my office is in, in Columbus and there's been one at the, at the shop, three at the shopping center for a long time, you know, and, and it's their special that stays their special. So, uh, I think the historic district is, is a place for them. But what about regulating them every so many feet? Because even historic district, you're tripping over them, they're, they're everywhere and they can be, they can be clutter. Um, so I, I, it's just an idea, I don't know if that will work or not.
So Jenny, are we going to see the Bridge Street new code again? So we could talk about that when we see that, that Bridge Street code.
Yeah, you'll see that the historic code and guidelines amendment will be coming to you here before the end of the year. So.
Fantastic.
The larger Bridge Street overhaul is still outstanding, but yes, you will see that.
Thank you. Mr. Schneer, your opinion on the sandwich board?
A, a couple of points. Uh, I would be concerned a, about anything that could be viewed as, uh, you know, as arbitrary. Uh, because it won't be, won't be sustainable. Um, so you could, you could go one way or the other, you could say, you know, that we're not going, just leave it in Bridge Street and deal with it there. Um, rather, if you did want to permit it elsewhere, rather than do it by per square footage because, or per frontage because that means, I mean, who gets there first and now I can't have one because two storefronts down have one. Um, maybe i- i- you could do it based on some sort of duration, like some of the temporary signs where you couldn't daisy chain it. But you could have one so many times a year for so long a period of time. I, I personally, I think it's, it, it's not unreasonable to have even, you know, strip mall merchants on occasion be, having the opportunity to have those signs. If, if they're legitimately sort of special events and the only way to determine their special events is to prohibit them from just being there for six months at a time and then you have to wait five days and then you go for another six months. But obviously you could cover that by, you know, so many days a year and not pancake it. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schneer. Mr. Supalak?
I'm good omitting it. I mean, there's a certain amount of, there is a certain amount of, sandwich boards are better in a pedestrian environment, urbanity. The, the question is, how do we control that? How do we define that, um, on an ongoing basis? But if the, if the commission is, right, I, I don't, I don't think we're getting comfortable with this as a more broad-based, solution. And if that's the case, it feels like we should pull it off.
Okay, Mr. Grimes?
I agree on the pulling off. That's his thought about, uh, if you got full a year's permit and you get ninety days, you pick the ninety days. Uh, and, uh, that's all you get. And that way you may eliminate maybe some seasonal clutter, you won't have continuous clutter. There may be times when everybody wants the same week of days. But, you know, that way you can probably by permit, survey the area to see who's sticking with the plan or not. Uh, I, of course, all this takes more enforcement and more monitoring, make it a challenge, I realize that. So I don't, I don't want to drive cumbersome jobs, you know, to the required, to be monitoring. But that's just one way of thinking through this of, of limiting that continuous clutter. That's all I'd say, but I would pull it from the outside district, yes.
Perfect. Okay, Ms. Ratch?
Good, okay, that's good.
And Leo, you did a great job leading into the next one because the next one is seasonal business period sign.
Yeah, so for the next four of them, I really had no changes. It was taking and again rewording, and then we had some discussion about the seasonal business, like eliminating the color part of that. So, um, yeah, these were as they currently exist in the code, so.
Here's a thought. Um, and I don't know, it might open the Pandora's box on the seasonal business period sign. I'm assuming that for the holidays, they can ask for something special, is that what this is?
So there are certain business types that are considered seasonal business.
Okay.
They are allowed to have a sign for that. So no, it's not necessarily like carte blanche, you can have whatever you want. It's someone that has to get up a special, a certain get up approval, yeah.
All right. And, and under seasonal decorations, which is next, that's not necessar- that's just a decoration, not a sign. So there's no, where someone's going to ask you for a seasonal sign.
No.
Like says, come on in, it's Christmas, that.
Yeah, no, 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 no. Yeah, the scope of those are very, very limited.
Any comments on seasonal business period sign? And next, seasonal decorations. Questions, comments? We're on to special events. Questions, comments? We did talk about this, uh, last time. And then finally, other temporary signs? Questions, comments?
Uh, just one quick one for Jenny, the, um, the big sign that hangs during the memorial tournament on the side of the Marriott. Did we deal with that at all in this or is that always just going to be a special consideration?
I, I think that's going to be a special consideration because I don't, I don't know how we would handle that.
That's fine.
Across the city, I guess, unfortunately.
Well, that's, that's actually good because I think that's the better way to handle it. I just didn't want to see it buried in here and then I didn't.
No, no, definitely no, yeah, yeah.
And the other one was, um, as Councilman Reiner had requested, the sign that goes along the, the fencing when we're constructing, like the Riverside Crossing Park. And Reiner asked us to put, asked if we could think about putting a big, huge sign along there that showed what the park would look like. How do we handle those? Or there's also kind of special consideration signs.
So we included that under, and it's called construction trailer signs, but maybe it should be called something else. Um, it says decorative inserts or wraps on construction or site fencing are not considered a sign. So we're saying that I can have, that's allowed, it's, there's no permit required.
Okay, so then beta test here again. Let's just say anybody who's constructing anything can now put up a great big sign along their fence showing Tartan Ridge or whatever they want to build. So you want to do that or do you want to leave it as a special, that you have to come and ask a special request for that? Because those can be pretty large, pretty darn large signs and a lot of.
I mean, the ones for Riverside are like a thousand feet long, I mean, they're, yeah, it, it is, yes, it is.
Yeah, and this one differentiate between who gets one and who doesn't. That was special because it was the park, but that's the way I looked at it. But now.
Okay, yeah, I think we took their, that recommendation though, that all should be allowed to have that. So again, not that we couldn't write requirements around that, we could definitely do that in a permitting process, we could definitely do that, so.
Okay, I, I would be, uh, agreeable to the permit process. Uh, and then of, of course, looking at it from a, how, how would we want to write the parameters? A, a construction fence is pretty ugly and if you're, you have bobcats and friend loaders and everything else behind the fence, it's even uglier. Um, you know, my kids, when they were two years old, would have been thrilled, but a, anyone else who's driving around the neighborhood or lives next to it may not be too thrilled. So that is, I, I think we ought to take that into consideration with the parameters. But I agree with Jane that, that I, I would like that to see an application and an approval process and not just anybody can put up any amount of sign. Uh, again, because we also can't monitor content and so that, that's a big sign. Okay, thoughts from the rest of the commission?
I agree.
Agreed.
Head non, head non, Mr. Schneer, take it or leave it? Okay. All right.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Uh, signs with special conditions.
So that's on to a next section that we're not dealing with. So we're, we're complete, that's the complete part of the temporary sign, so.
Wow, all right. So Steph, did we receive any public comment on this item?
We have not, that I'm aware of, unless Claudia got something.
No, we did not.
Okay, all right. Now council discussion, we did, sorry, commission discussion. We did talk about this mostly during the presentation, but as a whole, uh, like to go around the virtual room and just get your feelings. So, uh, Ms. Kennedy, could you kick us off?
Absolutely. Um, Jenny, thank you for your, thank you to you and the team for the hard work to update this, um, proposal. I think you've incorporated a lot of our feedback, although we've sometimes, um, been mixed in that. But I, I certainly appreciate your hard work and, um, I think you've made a lot of effort to improve this package. So I've already voiced kind of my, my small concern. So just to circle back, the sandwich board was the one that, that I had the issue with. And I'm glad that we're going to be potentially removing that from this application or from this proposal. Um, beyond that, um, nothing major to, to call out, just thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Fishman, would you like to go next?
I, I think we've discussed it all. I think quality and size is important and, and, and clutter.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Mr. Supalak?
I, um, reiterate Christina's comments, um, kudos Jenny, kudos Thad, kudos Claudia. Appreciate you guys all sort of scrubbing through this and, and fine tuning this with us. It's good work.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Mr. Grimes?
We are moving to a better place, thank you.
Mr. Schneer?
Uh, nothing there.
Ms. Fox?
No, I think, I think we've made really great progress. I know council's intent was to reduce sign clutter. Definitely take care of these leasing signs, which I think this has been a great discussion, absolutely good. And I think we've, we've done a lot. Um, I have one question for Jenny about definitions. And that was, and this wasn't temporary sign code, but it, but it is in the definitions. And I, I just, I saw that you changed, that something was changed about the historic and cultural assessment piece and contributing and non-contributing definition. Uh, I just wondered, is that going back before ARB again? Um, is non-contributing and contributing assignment is kind of a vague, a vague definition in the historic and cultural assessments, they don't use it? Kind of, they use it in.
In the new code, they will, yes. This, the problem is we're working on several code amendments at the same time. So I was using the definitions that go with that code amendment add to this. So yes, to answer your question, it will go back to ARB for their final approval and you will see that as part of your review of that as well.
Right, that's all, yes. But a great work on all the other, all the temporary signs, that's wonderful, wonderful.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. So I, I won't belabor anymore, you, you guys did a fantastic job, so thank you very much. Great, okay, well, we'll make these changes and be back before you for another round of review. Thanks again for everything, I appreciate your comments. All right, so at this time, I am looking for a recommendation, uh, excuse me, a motion to recommend approval for an amendment to the City of Dublin zoning code, sections one fifty-three dot one fifty through one fifty-three dot one sixty-four to be forwarded to city council. Now.
I actually wonder if we should recommend to be tabled, let's table this request if that's okay?
Thank, thank you, I was.
This commission, then table it.
Yeah. All right.
So do we need to make a motion to table? Is that what we're asking, Ms. Call?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Do I have a second?
I can.
Mr. Grimes, Ms. Beal?
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yep.
Mr. Schneer?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Supalak?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Ms. Beal. Now, moving back to item number one, Ms. Noble, I've already introduced this item. Are you ready to go with our presentation tonight? The, it's behaving itself now.
I am, and thank you, I'm so sorry. I made a PowerPoint thinking it would make things easier, but clearly I was mistaken.
Oh, we turn the time over to you, thank you for joining us tonight. Ms. Noble, you're, there you are.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Um, so I apologize. Um, again, I made a PowerPoint to try to make this easier and hopefully it will do said thing. So, um, I wanted to, uh, make a clarification before we started the discussion that we talked internally and we are looking for informal discussion from the commission um, based on the fact that this is the first time that they've, that you've seen a code. Uh, we want to make sure that we incorporate all of your comments before we actually ask for a recommendation. So with that being said, I am going to start my paragraph. Are we a go?
We do not see it yet.
Any luck now?
No, ma'am.
All right, well, I'm going to do this the old-fashioned way then, we're just going to talk about this. Um, so if the commission would remember the last time that we met on this topic, we actually had a joint, uh, meeting with the Architectural Review Board in June. Um, and based on a lot of those comments, we started to draft a code that we thought addressed the uh, concerns and comments that you had. Um, specifically, we're talking about property maintenance. Um, we do have a property maintenance code and Jane, you'll, you'll recall that we recently updated our version of our property maintenance code in April. So that was the first step in trying to address the, uh, comments and concerns that we had regarding whether or not our property maintenance code is going far enough. Um, so we did conduct the meeting in June, we did ask the commission as well as the Architectural Review Board to weigh in on your concerns. Um, and we had a, a really healthy dialogue and what we finally concluded was that there were a couple of things that we still wanted to see pursued by a code amendment. And those three things in sequence, um, one was code enforcement activity or a process that we could solidify. Um, two was, uh, basically identifying secured properties and how we would like to see secured properties handled. And third, how those secured properties would, um, be in, be enforced. So, um, the draft code that we've put together is, is again, just trying to, um, address those comments and see if we've, we've gauged appropriately. So, um, I will say that, uh, I will start with the, um, enforcement process, uh, discussion. Uh, one thing that we had not presented to either, uh, this commission or the Architectural Review Board is the fact that we do have an administrative order that, uh, solidifies our enforcement process. And we've had some discussion, not only with Thad, um, Thad's group, but our enforcement team about, um, how that administrative order came about and why it was actually, um, compiled as an administrative order. about how that administrative order came about and why it was actually compiled as an administrative order and just kind of the logistics behind that. So I'll, I'll kind of put that on the, the side table for the, for the time being. The two things that we really wanted to target for this draft is basically securing properties in a manner that we think are more appropriate. And when I say more appropriate, I'm talking about timeframes that not allow properties to go indefinitely unsecured. And two, how they're actually secured, what they look like during the time that they're secured and what we're looking for in terms of enforcement if they do not follow those, those procedures. So the code that we've drafted, again, as Jenny kind of alluded to in her code modification, we did take a code section that currently exists. It's our nuisance code section. And what we did was we created additional language that we thought would address what we are terming vacant properties. We did take council member Fox's suggestions. We did look to the city of Marysville in terms of timeframes that were appropriate for how long a property would A, go unsecured once it's identified as a health and safety risk, two, how it's secured once we did identify it as such, and three, how long it can maintain that status, which we've, again, adopted the same regulations as Marysville, which is 30 days. So I believe we captured the thoughts or at least the ideas behind secure properties. Jenny and I also did some research in terms of other communities outside, actually outside the state of Ohio that regulate maintenance that's required for a building, quite frankly, to ensure that they don't become in a state of disrepair. And that's the section that, that we've gotten into with a whole host of different issues that we want to see maintained, including how is the roof being maintained? How is the drainage system being maintained? How are the walls, chimneys, and so forth, overhangs? How are all of those mechanisms being maintained so that doesn't jeopardize the integrity of the structure itself? So that might have been a little bit of liberties on our part, but we thought it was going to, towards the idea of let's keep properties in good structural integrity while they are currently vacant. So those are the two, two main components of the draft that we created. The third, I, I said that I wanted to put on a side table is the enforcement process, which is a little more of a discussion that I wanted to have with the group. As I said, we do have an administrative order that we adopted intentionally. I believe it was 2016. That correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was 2016. And we did that specifically as an administrative order, which is enforceable. And it's more of a policy oriented type of, I'm going to call it document that outlines what our procedures are to the public. When you, when you file a complaint, what are we going to do? How are we going to do it? And how are we going to enforce it? So it does create a procedural element to enforcement. And the one thing that I think that we need to talk about is the fact that it is, it, it doesn't dedicate timeframes associated to what happens when you report a complaint versus how many days does it take to get a letter? How many days does it take to get a second letter? So forth and so on. And I'm, and those are examples. The reason why we've done that, and I'm, I'm, I'm kind of pulling from, again, our, our legal team and our enforcement team, we've done that quite intentionally. And we've done that because the range of topics that we're talking about when we're dealing with enforcement are so widespread. They can go from anything from a weed violation to, quite frankly, a hoarding situation where there's a much more difficult level of complexity to get compliance. So there's been an intentional flexibility, I guess I will say, in the administrative code to allow for our code enforcement officers to conduct their jobs with that kind of level of, I guess, discretion. So what I would, what I would like to, to do with the commission is first and foremost, talk about the elements that we've proposed for, again, securing properties and maintaining vacant properties. So let's start with those discussion points. And then we'll maybe conclude on the enforcement part. So at this point, I, I, I would love to answer questions. Just for clarification, again, the, the text that's in blue is what we've added. Anything that's in regular black font is already in our existing code.
Thank you, Ms. Noble. All right. Discussion on 153 dot 002B definition secured and vacant structure. Any questions, comments?
I don't know if Warren had a comment. He raised his hand.
Warren, you're muted.
I, I had a question on, on vacant properties. You said there was time limit, of course, we've all probably gotten calls, I know I have, about the property behind the Sunoco station, the, 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 the old duplexes. That's been years. And, and, and I was wondering, first of all, are we, we trying to regulate how we secure them? Because that has plywood and, and, and you know, over, it's obviously looks vacant. It, it, neighbors are saying it's a danger, but we don't want to get into that now. But just, what's the, is, I, I looked through this thing. I didn't see a time limit in, in how long, the thing except when you said this, your new revision is that, that it's so many days, 30 days. So, so why isn't something being done about that property, for example?
So, I mean, the short answer to that is this is a proposed code. And honestly, it's to deal with, with properties of that sort. So it's not retroactive. But that, that quite frankly, has been an impetus for, for this discussion.
So I, I just have one question, and maybe, Mr. Boggs, this might be for you. The definition, in the definition section, we call out a vacant structure and the duration of time, but also say that it is, that structure is termed a vacant structure if it, it has been abandoned for a period of 30 days and meets one of these other items. I, I'm a little uncomfortable because there are some vacant structures, and we're defining vacant structures that don't meet any of the eight criteria.
I'm, I'm, what, what is the nature of your concern? I'm sorry.
So my concern is we're designing a vacant structure as a vacant nuisance structure. And you know, it, it's okay if, if we want to do that, but defining a vacant structure not based on its vacancy, but based on its vacancy and nuisance. I'm just, I struggle with that a little bit.
Well, there was a recognition that certainly structures can be vacant without creating problems for their neighborhoods. Somebody's away, you know, a snowbird or something like that. If, if the preference would be to have the definition read as a vacant nuisance structure, is that sort of what you're getting at? That just on, as somebody reads it and just sees vacant structure, they're going to be perhaps misled by the.
If I get notice, I'm a property owner and I own a, a property and I get a notice that says I'm in violation of code because I have a vacant structure, but it doesn't meet these criteria, that there's nothing in the definition of the code violate, the code violation itself. And understandably, I would be notified of what my violation was. I would prefer a vacant nuisance structure, vacant something else structure, because just defining a vacant structure, I don't want someone to think that they can't have a vacant structure. They can, so long as it doesn't cause a nuisance and a safety issue. So Ms. Fox, did you have?
Well, just in your comment, Ms. Call, I think, I think, I see your point because that's the problems we're dealing with is the nuisance ones. But, but I, I feel as if in meeting at least one of the following conditions is where, I, I thought the same thing when I read it. But then it said it must meet, meet at least one of the following conditions, which then calls it into attention of enforcement. For instance, there's a house, I'll get, we'll beta test it. There's a house over, not very far from, I think it's around Shire Rings Road. It was a house that had a drug bust. That house was in the middle of a very nice neighborhood. It had been a very nice house. And the, the police got rid of the people that caused them problems. And the house then got boarded up and the neighbors just got upset and stayed that way. Now, our enforcement and our plan, it kept after and then after it. But to have this kind of key really helps force that landlord to get that fixed faster than he would have or that he did do. And so having at least one of the following conditions at least gives them the power. I would add a, a few things on this, but I think that having these conditions underneath there and you only have to meet one of them to be considered a vacant structure is a good idea.
Yeah, and I agree with the premise and I agree with the concept. It's, I would just add a word to the definition.
Not all of them are nuisances, though. I mean, not all become a nuisance till they hit one of those conditions, I guess.
Correct. And, and so since we're defining the vacant structure, it has to have at least one of these. I, I would say vacant nuisance structure or something. Okay, got a thumbs up from Mr. Fishman. Ms. Kennedy, did you have any questions, callouts on the definition here?
Not from me right now.
Okay, Mr. Suplack.
So I'm, I'm going to go to stipulation number six in particular, which to the point of snowbirds and/or, and/or even vacant tenant shells. Vacant tenant shells don't necessarily have all their utilities inlaid and those sorts of things. The rest of them, I definitely think, right, obviously if something's got a notice or is structurally unsound or has been under violation of city ordinances, et cetera, et cetera, there, they definitely allude to problematic places. But the disconnected utilities, I don't know that that alone is a stipulation that tells me it's a problem.
Actually, that's a, that's a really good point. And maybe Warren could, I don't know if you could weigh in on this. When, if, if I were, let's say I'm the snowbird or bird and I, I, I leave, can I? It's not necess, is it necessarily disconnected or is it? I'm going to use the word discontinued. Can you like pause your utility service? Or do you actually disconnect it if you leave?
The only utility you'd want to turn off is the water.
Right.
You actually want a certain amount of heat in your house. I go through this with, with rental houses all the time. And, and I'm sure Rebecca will too, that, that, that you, we sure, we turn off the water. We don't have to call the water company and say, discontinue our service. There's a valve there, you turn it off and so the pipes won't freeze. And, and so I, I don't, I don't think if, if, if they're turned off for non-payment, that's a different story. Now, not to get, go into this too much. Some people might say, well, I'm going to be gone for six months. And there is a minimum fee that you pay each month, whether it's turned off at the valve or not. Okay? And I don't know, if somebody's frugal enough to say, I'm not going to pay that fee, then I guess they can discontinue their service for six months. I think, I think you got to pay to have to turn it back on though. So I don't, I don't think so. I, 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 I think that if, if it's for non-payment, if they, if it's turned off by the water company, then maybe that might be a different story. I don't know how you can differentiate that though. But I don't think there's any necessary to call a, a utility company and say, turn off my electricity and turn off my, you know.
And/or, and/or, Cammy, that might, that's still, I, I might still go to, there's plenty of sort of commercial strip centers with tenant shells and, that are basically voided of their utilities until somebody builds out that tenant shell, so.
And, and since we're really defining those nuisance structures, the, the fact that they have their utilities off doesn't impact anyone else around them. In fact, it could protect, to, to Mr. Fishman's point, you turn off your water because you don't want the damage that could be caused by breaks. So for me, I don't see number six as a requirement. Uh, Mr. Schnair, did you have a comment?
Uh, well, if you wanted to keep number six in, I'd try to make a finer point. One is this deals with, with structures that become vacant. So the, the implication is that they were once occupied. So if it was the shell, then they were not occupied, so they could not have become vacant. Then, so if people are comfortable with that, then you move down to the utilities. If you take out the, you take out the clause not in use, which I think is inappropriately vague, and you say, has utilities disconnected? And you, if you added the words, has all utilities disconnected? It would cover the situation because disconnected is very different. It's physical from discontinued. So disconnected means the gas, that AEP and Columbia Gas and Department Water comes out and pulls the meters. And I, I'm, you know, if, if that occurs, then I think that, that would, that would qualify. I'm also okay if there's enough other conditions and you could take the whole thing out. But if you wanted to leave it in, that would be my recommendation of how you narrow the scope and still, still have the meaning that presumably was intended.
Thank you, Mr. Schnair. Mr. Grimes.
I think what you're just trying to get at here in this definition is create those items to give that administrative remedy action enforcement. So really what you want to say is these eight items, any one of these items could cause your building to be declared vacant. And then we pursue enforcement, we prefer something under the administrative order or so forth. You still want to have some discretion by your administrators in order to take action if the property owner is going to be cooperative. But if not, it's vacant, we go on to the next step. So leaving utilities alone like it is, this gives the, the administrative order or enforcement one more tool. And, and it's still up to their discretion to work on this property. And, and you know, it could be three or four of these things. But leaving it in there, if that's the only one in that causes a problem, there's really got to be something else wrong with the property. It's just a, there's got to be more that would cause it to come to the attention of the authorities. So I have no problem with leaving the list like it is. I think it's fine. If you wanted to turn it around and list the eight things and then say, any one of these could cause it to be determined vacant structure? It's just semantics though, but those are just my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. So on, on the disconnected, utilities disconnected, I, I think adding the word all makes it a little bit more akin to what we were looking at. The only, you know, Mr. Schnair made a point to say disconnected is very different. Meters are full and that sort of thing. But the common vernacular for non-payment is your service is going to be disconnected. And so I think that that's a little bit of a shady area. While we may mean disconnected, severed from, and meter removed, their notice also says disconnected, and that just means disconnected from the service available to them. So I, I would be okay if we added all. But Ms. Kennedy, how about, over to you. You're muted, Ms. Kennedy.
Okay, I think I'm on now. Sorry about that. All seems to point more towards the nuisance, as was explained earlier. So for that reason, I would lean towards all, just to, to point more towards the nuisance. If everything is disconnected, therefore, there really is an issue there.
Thank you. Ms. Fox.
I'll wait to the end.
Okay. Mr. Schnair.
We could also add all utilities physically disconnected, which would, which is a different status. I mean, that is literally physically disconnected, which they don't do, I don't believe, for non-payment is actually. I don't believe for non-payment is actually physically. They just they shut it off, which is different than physically. Um, and while I have while I have the Florida nitpick, I think there might be a parallel construction before the before the the numbered callouts consecutive days, and I think it should say which also meets plural instead of meet.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. All right, any other callouts on definitions before we move down to Ms. Fox?
Right, I I think one thing that I'm just playing devil's advocate. The the definition vacant structure, I like it being holistic because we will have vacant structures that are not nuisances. But we need to be able to identify that we do have a vacant structure and vacant or abandoned for a period of time, at least thirty days, maybe a house that's just up for sale, right? It's not a nuisance, but it is a vacant house. It only becomes noticeable for enforcement when it meets one of these criteria. So in other words, I think we have to define what a vacant structure is holistically for every vacant structure. But we don't have to enforce anything on these vacant structures unless they become a nuisance. And that's where I think these um one through eight give teeth to to any vacant structure that becomes a nuisance. So I think you have to identify and say what a vacant structure is and how a normal vacant structure is secured to make everyone in the neighborhood feel comfortable about a home that no one lives in. Or no one's residing in or no one's having a commercial use for. And and you say, well, that's okay because you're taking care of it and you're uh doing everything that we would all be doing and you're vacant structure, but that's okay. You become a problem for us when you start have following one of these conditions. And those conditions are the things that tip the hat to the code enforcement people. And that's why I think we don't put nuisance in there because we are gonna have vacant structures. Or you may have a a structure that um and also maybe it's maybe there's some wording in here on intent. Uh, when you go to talk about why you're addressing the nuisance, the intent might be something where the vacant property needs to be kept in the same condition as adjacent neighborhoods and homes that occupy the area. Or or that's the intent. It's not necessarily a code that you write. It's just simply a guideline that says we are writing this code to avoid this nuisance because we would hope that all vacant structures in this neighborhood appear to be as well maintained as all occupied structures, something that just gives you a reason for why you do that. And then on secured, uh, in the property maintenance code, international property maintenance code, they even go as far as saying that that security goes as far as gates, uh, walkways, the security is even a little bit more inclusive on how it's how it's secured. It's not just locking the place up. It's making sure that it's secured to um avoid that outside look that 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 makes people wanna loiter there, I guess. And then um I have some other suggestions on some of the additional definitions, and I think Marysville did some of that. Had had some of, they talked about that if it's illegally, one of the conditions, if it's illegally occupied, including loitering or vagrancy, because we've had vacant structures where we've had people living in them and they shouldn't be in there. Now, all of a sudden, it's not an abandoned or an unoccupied property, but it's vacant with someone who's not allowed to be living in it, living in it. So that was one of theirs, that one of their conditions was illegally occupied property. Or it has not been used for its intended purposes for a hundred and eighty days. There might be some additional definitions here that I'm happy to um maybe forward to planning to give some thought to. And then um let me think if there was another another piece in here. I think I I think that's, those are the ones on definitions, but that's why I would leave vacant structure as just a definition of that.
And I'm not opposed to having a a definition of vacant structure that is not a nuisance vacant structure. I just want to make sure that the ones that we are calling out saying these can have administrative action taken against them are the ones that are nuisance and not the ones that are just simply vacant but taken care of. Mr. Box.
I was just going to say a note of caution in regard to Councilmember Fox's remark about the legal occupancy issue that is in Marysville's code. I don't know what circumstances led them to put that in there, but I I will say that at least in the example I'm aware of from Dublin, it may have been there there were landlord-tenant issues that complicate that analysis as well. And so we also want to make sure we don't find ourselves essentially standing in the shoes and doing enforcement actions that should be handled by the landlord under landlord-tenant law.
Right.
Or criminal trespass. I mean, if there's a legitimate criminal trespass.
Criminal trespassing or people that just find a vacant house and they decided that they're just gonna homestead.
Right. That would be more of a criminal trespass issue versus I think that the if if you and I are thinking of the same situation, that was a holdover tenancy, which.
Oh, okay. I'm not even aware that what it was, but I do know that we've had some some folks staying, some folks who have wandered into our city and decided to stay in some unusual places. So I just don't, I didn't know if there's a way that we could add that, but it's not, it's not that big of a problem. So, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Mr. Fishman.
I I think Jane's point is well taken if we can word something like criminal trespass because there are situations in Dublin where there's vacant houses and and people live in them and there's been situations where fires were caused and all kinds of things. Then the house became a house that was really a, you know, a nuisance. So um, I wonder if we can word something, yeah, I I think you shouldn't get involved with tenants and landlords as far as, you know, evictions, but I think that that there are houses that if that nobody knows somebody's living in it, you know, the landlord would know if there's somebody there, but uh, if it was a legal uh tendency, but if it's somebody that wandered in the back door of a house of some family that's gone to Florida for for five months, I I think that's something we should enforce.
You know, that would be a criminal matter through the police division. So, I mean, we we can certainly look at at the property maintenance issues that may be a that may be associated with that type of activity, but property maintenance code is is not going to be your ideal venue for that sort of activity, which is essentially, you know, that example was burglary, arson and criminal trespass. Um, now, if the person has their house burned up by somebody who illegally enters and leaves it in a state of disrepair, then we have the property maintenance matters.
Mr. Box, I I think the concern is right now because we're defining the vacant structure as something that is has been unoccupied for a period of thirty days and meets one of the criteria. We don't want to prevent uh being print prevent ourselves from being able to take action on something because someone has squatted in a an unsafe property and therefore it hasn't been unoccupied for thirty days, e- even though it should have been because they weren't entitled, they weren't legally there. So it's the preventing us from acting on the vacant property, not the fact that.
Nothing, excuse, sorry. Nothing in this amendment prevents property maintenance enforcement from occupied structures. I mean, I I don't know what Greg's statistics are, but I I would suspect that the large majority of his contacts are with people who are in their homes and for any number of reasons are having trouble keeping them up.
Thank you for pointing that out. All right, any other callouts on definitions? Mr. Schneer. And Mr. Schneer, you're muted.
Yeah, I I'm not sure this is 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 technically about definitions, but uh perhaps inclusion. And there might be a catch twenty-two in here, maybe the questions for Mr. Box. Um, and actually, full and fair disclosure, this could have a a applied to to me because we have a demolition permit pending with the architectural review board. If you technically, if this if this were in force, then someone who has a pending demolition application could for a a home that would meet one or more of these criteria could be required to fix up the house that they're requesting to tear down. So uh so in the definite in the perhaps should be a definition, an exclusion that that this doesn't apply to uh, a property where there is a demolition application pending, but you know, if that if the application is dismissed or rejected or whatever, then you know, the it's sort of a stay, you know, for that period of time.
Yeah, that's a good point.
The same might be actually true for a for a building permit. I mean, a renovation building permit that not, I mean, all that type, all that stuff takes time to go through the cycle and it's it's longer than thirty thirty days even on the review. Is it, is it that, is there some stipulation about? I don't, I wanna, I'm gonna say a plan, right? Because obviously, if I'm, if I bought a bought a parcel and it's in disrepair, but I have to do the architectural drawings and engineering drawings and that type of stuff, that takes a duration. Then it's got to go in for permit review, which could be one month, maybe two months. That's a duration.
And a lot of times, you know, Mr. Suplack pointed out, he bought a property. A lot of times parcels in this type of situation are changing hands. What we don't want to do is we don't want the neighbors to have to live next to something for a hundred and eighty days because somebody bought it and then decided it was too much work and somebody else bought it and then they decided it was too much work. It's still a safety hash, uh, safety issue, safety hazard. And so how do we put enough teeth uh around it that we can do something about it while not compelling the city to do something about it if there are situations like a pending demolition permit or a pending building permit? We don't want to get ourselves in a position where somebody's filing a permit and then they're not doing anything on it for sixty days, a hundred and twenty days, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days.
Oh, so, well, relative to that commentary, at some point in this conversation, I also brought up, I feel like it's, it might be Sunrise uh Senior Center, which is by the Leo Alfred on one sixty-one across the street from Honda, because now now this is a different sort of stipulation. And I feel like I I don't remember if it was um the you know, the oh one oh two sort of downturn or if it was the oh eight oh nine downturn, but that essentially was a construction site, building permit. They got through foundations, they got through a steel shell. And then they basically walked away from for it from from it for years and it sat there as a steel shell. It happens that they eventually returned to it. Economy came back back around, they returned to it. Uh, and they have now completed it, but that one was always an eyesore as a incomplete and otherwise abandoned construction site.
I I might add, maybe this could solve a lot of the question that we're having. Um, back to Chairperson calls, uh, comments about the vacant structure. What if we were to leave the definition of vacant structure as is and add a sentence that said and can be enforced if can be enforced if any of the following occur? So that gives us the latitude of enforcing. What does that, would that solve concerns?
I I worry about arbitrariness in that, Mr. Box, you unmuted yourself, so I'll I'll defer to you.
Right, I mean, there is enforcing any code, a level of discretion. You know, not to go out writing people up that are that have active demolition permits, but to your point earlier, or at least I think it was your point that Chair, that if you have a troubled troubled property, for whatever reason, it's changed owners or um plans have fallen through, you have to address those issues. So you know, we can, we can put in exemptions or stipulations saying that an open demolition permit would for lack of a better word, stay some of these requirements, but that you know, perhaps put a full cap on total number of days or or something along those lines. So people are on notice um that situations can't drag out forever just because I have submitted new plans and gotten a building permit.
No, I I think we've given quite a bit.
Here that will help guide enforcement discretion.
Okay, I I think we've given quite a bit of food for thought on this and we're going to see this code back again. So are there any other callouts on the definitions before we proceed along? So first up on this vacant structures is intent, Mr. Fishman, I'll come right back to you. Is intent, so change to your earlier comment, if you could read through that and see if there are items that you want to call out or that you'd like to add to that section. So, Mr. Fishman. You're muted.
Just real quickly, this might not even a point, but section one oh seven point six under trade, we're talking about these vacated property transfer of ownership. It it's very common for to get cited by the city and then you're in FLG LLC. You simply um sell the company, sell the building to GLC LLC and and the the you're no longer in, you're no longer cited for the violation, you're not no longer in violation. Uh, is, uh, this would be for legal, I guess. Why can't we require, and this, I I think this is done in other states, the 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 repairs and and to bring it back into code before it changes hands, before it's sold. Um, if if you already have a violation and you're you're already been cited for the violation. Does legal have any comment about that? That is?
I'm I am not aware of provisions imposed by local law in other states that would prohibit the sale of a property based on a pending violation and while I I could be proven wrong, I do not believe we would have the authority to impede the sale of a property based upon a pending violation. Now, just because a property is sold following a violation doesn't mean that violation goes away. The former owner could still be prosecuted for it. It obviously a transfer of property in the middle of enforcement complicates things, but my opinion today is that we do not have the authority as a city to prevent the transfer of property based on a property maintenance code violation.
But not just violation, but being cited for the violation.
Correct.
Okay.
But at the same time, the violation doesn't go away because the transfer of property happened.
Right, yeah, the a prosecution could continue against the
New owner.
Means for or of the property.
The new or old owner? Both?
I beg your pardon, Warren, I couldn't.
The 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 violation, it it can still be enforced against the old owner, but he'll say, I got rid of the property. So it has to be the new owner, right?
Well, the old owner could still be fined for the violation. And as you know, as a practical matter, you can't make the old owner do things to fix up the property, but you know, their fourth degree misdemeanors, they're a new violation every day. So the old owner, if this went through mayor's court, could still be subject to a two hundred and fifty dollar fine. Every day there was a violation up to the filing of the complaint. So it it they would still be subject to those fines. And then if the violation continued under new ownership, that new owner could be cited, the new owner could be taken to the environmental court. And if it seemed like they were monkeying around with ownership to get out of fixing up a property, then we could go to a court and ask them to impose a temporary restraining order against transfer of the property because we believe that they're essentially fraudulent conveyances to avoid property maintenance enforcement. But as a matter of enacting that into a code and doing that as a regulatory body, it's not something that the city could do. We need a judge's help.
All right, any other callouts?
Yeah, a couple. One on that that we haven't really addressed, but it is in the International Property Maintenance Code is dangerous structure. And this came up at council when we there are some vacant properties in the historic district that have become what I would consider dangerous structures because structurally they're not as sound as they were. So we were it it is addressed in the International Property Maintenance Code under dangerous structures. Whereas if if we had an issue where we had to have the fire department or police go into the structure, it's it may not be foundationally safe enough to even walk inside. So to me, that may be something we may want to look at the International Property Maintenance Code and see if we need to add it to our own local code as a call out. So that there's an awareness when we go to our local code and someone doesn't have to go through all these pages of international property code. Even though the International Property Code is something that we can fall back on, I think in certain instances, actually carving out some of the important paragraphs in here that have been the source of some of our problems with vacant properties isn't a bad idea.
And we do have in in the definition, structurally unsound, under condemnation has been, you know, under notice for being in violation of city ordinance ordinances and demonstrates a lack of property maintenance. So I think that those have a little bit, but I can see where you'd want to call out unsafe.
Yeah, maybe maybe that. And then also on and I'm not sure where exactly this would be in maybe in the added in the intent piece. I know we can't treat aesthetically and you really have Tammy addressed it in where is the I lost my intent. You talked about it being similar to what's in the neighborhood. Maybe just make that as strong as we can legally make it. I'm not touching aesthetics, I'm talking about quality or type of maintenance. You know, the property maintenance code allows you to go into a property, let's just let's just take one of the one of those, the old stained glass building that's sort of fallen down. Probably maintenance code says it should have prevented paint on it to keep it from having water damage. It's another of the kinds of things you want to take it all the way up to making it look because these are maintenance issues, they're not necessarily aesthetics. Paint keeps wood from rotting, right? It's not to make it pretty, it's to keep it from rotting. Caulking makes wood what makes water damage. And then the other thing is, where do we say if someone's disconnected all the utilities? That is also makes that property then at at risk for decline because there's no heat in it. There's there's no way to keep the elements inside it from ruining the structure as well, you know? You let a property go without any kind of conditioning, it's going to literally, you know, become a problem. So I don't know if we want to address that either.
And and we do call out the utilities also in the definition?
Yeah.
So with vacant structures, moving on to the intent, the securing, has the commission had an opportunity to read through that? Is there any clarification that is needed? Do you want Tammy to go through any of this in detail? I think she did a remarkable job at defining all of the different, I mean, there are a lot of definitions in there. And I appreciate the call out, you know, simple things like walkways shall be safe for pedestrian travel. You know, the the purpose of a walkway need to needs to be upheld, chimneys and towers, all of those different things calling out that they need to work, they need to function, they need to be safe. Any callouts from the commission?
The the only one I would call out is when it says to structural openings. I I would go back to the International Property Maintenance Code and use as much of their language as you can because it it gets all the way to caulking and glazing and all of that. And if they think that that's an international standard, I I think we could apply it here.
Okay. Any other callouts from the commission? All right, as this item was for informal review and comments, Tammy, do you have all the direction you need from the commission?
I do. I guess my my lingering question is the enforcement piece that we pointed back to the administrative order. Again, I feel like we've gotten consensus, well, internally consensus that we would like the flexibility to continue using the administrative order, but I would I would like to pose that question.
So going around the room, Mr. Supalak, you first.
Yes, how about this, relative to that, when we when we spoke on this previously, we talked about, is there an adequate? Right, when when do we define the the code and that that type of stuff effectively enough, which which we are now doing, right? Kudos. Is there an adequate escalation path that has appropriate teeth and the if the administrative order is an adequate escalation path and does arm the enforcement agency effect enforcement arm appropriately? I could be satisfied with it. I just need to know that there's an escalation path.
I mean, that I I might defer to you. I I will, I will tell you essentially the administrative order says basically, and and again, I'm paraphrasing, but a resident will make a complaint and we will investigate. And if the investigation leads to a valid complaint, then we will enforce. And it goes as far as to say what type of, I believe, penalties are involved. That, would you agree with that? Because I want to make sure I'm not not overstating that.
You're muted.
Right, so the the administrative order sets out the path that the typical complaint will follow through to enforcement. Even going so far as to set out what the, you know, the violation notice has to have statement that, you know, violation has been observed, provided date of compliance, provide even identification of the ways that it's suggested to be remedied. So it's not just you have unsound openings to the building, it is we have observed, you know, missing glazing, deteriorated caulk needs to be remedied by September fifteenth by applying new caulk, new glazing. The notices can be very detailed and the administrative order spells that out. Eventually, it goes up to you know, requiring that any work that's being done legally would would stop. And then once that sort of notice of violation and internal process ends, it goes to mayor's court for for citation and potentially to environmental court if if mayor's court doesn't have enough teeth to get it done. But I I believe Greg has said, I don't remember if he said it to this body or to the Community Relations Committee when we were there, that ninety eight percent of what they get in that starts at, you know, step one of the administrative order doesn't get to legal. They get ninety eight percent compliance before they have to work all their way through that order.
So and in which case, I mean, you're touching on it, right? So that escalation path, I guess I'm I'm just for the onesies, twosies and the small things, it sounds like we have good teeth on all of it for the prolonged violation. Obviously, last time we looked at a couple of case studies and talked about a couple of case studies and that's where the escalation path up and do we have all the all the means in place for the city and those types of things?
Right, and I think that, you know, one of the one of the examples that has frequently come up you know, either for reasons of having people in it and interest in demolition, or there were some kind of false starts with bringing some of those into compliance from the property owner's side, I would anticipate that some of those things will be you know, addressed under this code going forward and but there are instances where the city, the city has demolished nuisance houses, the city has you know, city most people's lawns and builds them, the city has moved debris out of people's lawns and builds them. And it's not uncommon for Greg or somebody else on code enforcement to reach out to me or one of my colleagues and say, hey, there's a we haven't gotten a response. And can you reach out to them? And then, you know, one of us writes off a letter telling them, you know, what the issue is and what's what, and then they that gets their attention. So we I I can't speak for Greg, but I think my sense from him is that he feels like the administrative order gives him a lot of tools to escalate as needed.
So the, I mean, that was a long way to answer. I I I think I agree with you to answer your initial question. I can be supportive of the administrative order as well, Tammy.
Thank you. Mr. Schnair.
I'm I'm fine with this part of it.
Okay, Ms. Kennedy.
Yep, same here. I guess my only additional question is, is the timeline, just as a citizen, is the timeline clear to those that are making the complaints? And I get that that's somewhat out out of bounds for this discussion, but are those timelines clear to our citizens or those who are making the complaints? Or is that embedded in the administrative order is what you're saying that?
Well, the time timelines themselves are not embedded in the administrative order. The sequence of things is embedded, but different repairs take different time and now what I what I don't know is if there is kind of a doubling back to the complainant that says we sent a letter and demanded that this be done in sixty days or thirty days or whatever. I have I have had conversations personally with residents kind of on timeline bases for things that have escalated to that level, but I don't know as a general matter if the complainant is following up or if there is a outreach to them. I don't know where Tammy can do that.
I mean, I I might add, Christina, I actually am right next to to Greg. And we've been in close proximity for many a years. And I often hear him ask, and and again, this is, I I would say it's definitely informal, but typically he'll ask a complainant. A, do they want to be anonymous or not anonymous? And if they're not anonymous, do they want to know how things are proceeding? So he, I think he does offer that quite commonly. And then, of course, they're given our code enforcement officials' names to touch base periodically. So I would say just as protocol, that's pretty typical.
That's great. I was just thinking from a from a resident perspective, I'd hate to have residents out there seeming to think that things are not progressing. So I I appreciate that answer. Administrative order makes sense as well. I'm on board.
Thank you.
One of the things, just to come full circle on that is many of these are anonymous complaints. And if a person wants to remain non anonymous, it becomes a problem to send them a at least a written correspondence of what the timeline is that would become a public record that a a property owner could request and and there goes anonymity. I think those updates occur over the phone as Tammy mentioned.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. That's it from me, Rebecca.
Thank you, Ms. Fox.
Right, so devil's advocate once more. I receive, you can't believe how many complaints from residents about ongoing vacant properties or complaints about, and I pass it on. And and I agree that the administrative order with the flexibility and ninety eight percent of our enforcement issues are easily handled with Greg's very kind and helpful way for the city. It's this, it's this two percent is where I'm going, not the others. The two percent that are ongoing issues that everyone is asking the question mark that you've asked, or Christina, you've asked, that residents have no idea when anything's going to be fixed. That's what we have to fix here. I don't know how we fix it. But I think somewhere in this process of enforcement, there has to be an expectation on the part of the neighborhood residents to know that this has teeth and they know what the teeth look like and they know how they're going to be used on that two percent of property owners who don't take care of their place and leave them for years on end. So I I think we have to address that. I I worry that, you know, I think I think where we have the flexibility is if you have, as as Lance said, if you have a property that's going to be rehabilitated, no one's going to go enforce on you. No, the city's not, that's not their intent. The intent here is to make sure that these things get taken care of. Or if you're getting ready to renovate it, you know, it's it's the ones where you have no idea what they're doing. Marysville did ask that a file be maintained on chronically complaint on vacant properties. And council will frequently ask, how many complaints have you had on that property? Well, we don't always have a, maybe Greg has a file, I'm not sure. But I think it's important to also know if you have a chronic complaint on a property and that should be kept on file. So that might just be an administrative thing, but I think we really have to try to nail down this two percent that that have been just not able to get any kind of improvement on for years. I don't know what the answer to that is, but it's figured out.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Mr. Fish, Mr. Fishman, did you have any?
No more comment.
Okay, Mr. Grimes.
I like the administrative order process. I think that's good. Whatever additional tools we can give them to take care of these problems, I'm all for it.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. All right, back to you, Ms. Noble. Do you have all the information from the commission that you need at this time?
I do, and I really appreciate all the comments. We will be going to the architectural review board next week and then once we compile all of the comments, we'll be back before you with an amended draft.
Thank you again, Ms. Noble. We realize this has been a significant amount of work and thank you very much for your dedication and your efforts in it. We're looking forward, as I'm sure so are you, to adopting this new code and providing adopting this new code and providing a greater level of service to the residents of Dublin. So thank you for your efforts.
Absolutely. All right. As this is an informal review, it does not look like according to the agenda, I need a motion, Mr. Boggs. Do I need to table this?
Uh, no, it's just an informal.
All right. Then, if there are no objections, moving on to case number three for this evening. Case number three, residential development patterns. This is an informal review regarding recent trends in residential developments pertaining to lot sizes, side yard setbacks, lot coverage and density. So Claudia, it looks like you have the opportunity to wrap us up with our cases this evening. So thank you very much and we'll turn some time over to you.
And I am sharing my presentation. Hopefully, this is so nerve wracking.
We can see it. Yay.
Thank you so much. This is really a feat. Yes, I have prepared a quick memo for you, which was in your packet, and it came from many of discussions that the planning and zoning commission had with recent residential developments as well as city council. And Ms. Fox routinely shared the discussion that the commission had and the concerns that residents had with, particularly as it comes to setbacks, and many council members shared those concerns and emphasized that they would like to have a discussion and a recommendation from the commission eventually to potentially implement some changes. So we have prepared some slides with different residential developments that have all been approved. And we can talk about them openly. So there is, none of them are pending in any way. So I wanted to kind of go through them, but ultimately what, what the discussion centered around was those reduced setbacks and larger home footprints, especially in areas where empty nesters are the intended marketing target. And homes tend to be ranch style, which take up a larger footprint. So I have some examples that I wanted to share with you all. Oak Park was really one of the ones that was very concerning with the residents that live in this particular neighborhood. And to see the footprints better, I use just small sections of the, of the neighborhoods in these slides. Oak Park has a minimum lot size of six thousand nine hundred square feet. And that is the minimum, and most of the lots are right around that size or a little larger. The minimum lot width is fifty-five, and there are also sixty-five foot wide lots, but the fifty-five is permitted. And then the side yard setback is a standard number of six feet. And as you can see in this, in this aerial, that a lot of the homes do meet or are at that six feet distance. So there is twelve feet between the homes. Lot coverage here is sixty percent permitted. And again, as you can see, many of the homes are likely at that particular number. What is important to note with Oak Park is that that was developed as part of our conservation design resolution with fifty percent of open space, and it was intended to cluster homes within this particular neighborhood in areas that were not wooded. So there are very large areas of open space and the homes are clustered. That was at the time of this development, two thousand six, two thousand seven, something that the city had not seen before to have that amount of open space. And with Oak Park, we've also been aware that one of the homes particularly is the, a very popular model. So many of the buyers have picked that model, and that is one of the larger ones within this neighborhood. The next one is the Overlook at Tartan Ridge. There are no homes built yet, obviously, since that was just recently approved. The minimum lot size here is smaller than at Oak Park. It's sixty-five, a hundred square feet. And again, this is one of those empty nester geared products with a ranch style home. And minimum lot with fifty-two feet, minimum side yard, six feet, and then lot coverage here is up to sixty. Those are illustrations, obviously, as to how the lots could lay out or what the homes could be. And a lot of that depends on what the, what the buyer's pleasure would be as they are available for sale.
Claudia?
Yes.
Base was required. What percentage of open space on that particular parcel was required?
I don't know. It's, I think it's about, it's about thirty percent is what they, what they offered. It's twenty-four acres, and I think they have eight acres of open space. Overall, in Tartan Ridge, the open space is about forty percent.
Okay, thanks.
And then this is the Hamlet at Jerome, which really started off this conversation because A, only a portion of the lot is being developed with this empty nester style home at the five thousand square foot size and a minimum lot width of forty-five feet. And then the side yard here is five feet with the lot coverage at seventy. And for those of you that were here during this, this process, there were, especially the lots that are on the south side, they have quite a slope. And the air conditioning units are very close to one another in sort of a well type of, type of area that is actually at a zero foot setback, I believe. And the maintenance of those areas was something that was, that was a concern to staff as well as to the commission. In this illustration on the left of the screen, you can kind of see how these air conditioning units are between the homes and across the lot lines. And that was written into the development text like that. I had also included Tartan Ridge, the developed area, and I wanted to point out that on the north side of the street are homes that are at six thousand square feet of lot size and a lot width of about sixty feet. And they are actually rear loaded lots that have maintenance included in, in the, in the development. So they are, while not empty nester homes per se, they are being maintained by an HOA. And then on the south side are the residential homes that are more typical for this area of Tartan Ridge. Obviously, the northern area has the larger homes with larger setbacks. But the minimum side yard setback in Tartan Ridge, the the largest minimum is seven feet here. And lot coverage is forty-five for the majority of the neighborhood and then seventy for those rear loaded lots. On the south side, you can also see that some of the homes are really maxing out. Their lot coverage and their setback, especially that second one there on the screen, while the fourth one built a home that is leaving a lot of rear yard open. Again, that really depends on what kind of footprint and garage location people choose. Autumn Rose Woods, also on Highland Croway Road. We don't have an updated aerial. There are homes that are being constructed and are occupied actually as well. This is more of a typical development pattern with the nine thousand square foot lot size, a lot width of seventy feet, which does not allow for side loaded garage. So all of these garages are front loaded. Side yard setback, six feet, lot coverage forty-five. And originally, when this was presented to the commission and council, it was intended to be an empty nester geared product. Mainly because it is a ranch with loft type of home that Pulte is proposing here or permitting here with first floor masters. So the, the intent was to, to appeal to empty nester buyers. We have found that especially with the school redistricting, actually families have purchased these homes and have moved in. Riviera also has, depending on what sub area we're looking at, different development standards. So on the left of the screen are lots in sub area C, which are the smallest ones that they're permitting. So that's a seven thousand square foot lot size with a sixty foot width, five foot side yards, and then lot coverage can be up to seventy. These are regular single family homes, also intended for a empty nester buyer, but they are not maintained by the, by an HOA. So they are part of Riviera as is. And then on the east side of that screen is what is referred to as sub area B. That's a little bit in the middle between the smallest lot at seven thousand square feet and the largest at thirteen. And those setbacks are eight feet and they are requiring a fourteen foot total. So you would have eight on one side and you could have less than that on the other side. And lot coverage for those is forty-five. The entrance areas of Riviera are what they are calling sub area A, and those are the ones that are the largest lots and the largest setbacks, largest side yard requirements, and then the lowest lot coverage. And reminding you all that forty-five percent lot coverage is what is in the zoning code. Moving south, Ballentry Woods is a neighborhood that has two types of housing. Outline there in the blue is what is referred to as a regular single family, and that's what I highlighted. Mainly because the other portion is condominiums and the standards are very, very different there. So for the regular, they have no lot size required, but the lot width is sixty feet as a minimum. Also, five foot side yard setbacks. You can see some of those homes are very, very close to the property line. And a lot coverage for these is sixty percent. They actually had forty-five in their development text, which got approved. And then there were a couple of buyers that chose ranch homes. And with the ranch homes and the lot sizes, they could not have any patio space because they were exceeding the forty-five. And so they came back to the planning commission and asked for a text modification to allow the sixty percent. That was in early twenty nineteen, and that got approved. And then the condominiums, they are not on lots. So there is a twelve foot separation requirement between the homes. But there is not a lot coverage per se or a lot width per se.
Claudia, when they came back for the sixty, was it only allowed to do that?
Was it only what? Sorry?
Only the ranch homes would be allowed to cover it seventy percent? Were the two stories also then allowed?
Yeah, it's for all of the ones in that particular sub area. I'm sending you all over town here. We're going up north again. This is Celtic Crossing across from Jerome High School. This is also a Pulte product. It was very, very quickly to develop and have all the lots maxed out in terms of them being built very, very quickly, one after the other. As you can see, the lots are larger here. They're almost a third of an acre with a ninety foot lot width, where you can actually fit a side loaded garage. Minimum side yard here is six feet with a fourteen total. So you would have, you could have a six, but you would need a larger one, like an eight on the other side, or you could do seven and seven. And lot coverage here is the traditional forty-five percent. So due to the lots being bigger, these houses are sizable when you were able to travel up there. But the, the lots are larger, so it doesn't appear as tightly developed as maybe some of the others that we are looking at. Now, Ballentry has two hundred and forty-three home sites, I believe. So that was tough to pick one that is exemplary to, to what is permitted here. And there is a vast variety of requirements in terms of, there are hundred foot lots in certain areas, but the minimum would be an eighty foot lot width. And the minimum lot size is at ten thousand four hundred square feet, so about a quarter of an acre. And the lot with, the side yard requirement here is seven feet, fifteen total. So you need at least eight on the other side, obviously. And lot coverage is forty-five percent. And this neighborhood was approved in, I believe, two thousand. So it's, it's in its twenties. And another area of Ballentry that I wanted to show you is what's called the Villas at Ballentry. It's kind of in the center of the neighborhood. And this is also a condominium development. So there is no lots. The homeowners only really own the home itself, and then all the stuff around the home is owned by the HOA. So they do not have any of these typical requirements, but there is a ten foot separation required between the homes. Belvedere is a neighborhood from nineteen ninety-nine, and that is just north of Brand Road with a lot size of ten thousand four hundred square feet, a minimum of eighty feet in width. And eighty is pretty much the minimum that one would need to get a side loaded garage in. And then they have a relatively generous total side yard requirement, which is eighteen feet, but the minimum again is six. So you could have six on one side and your neighbor could also have six, but in total you would have to hit eighteen. A lot coverage is per code here as well. I picked Donegal Cliffs because it's from nineteen seventy-nine. And even there, six foot side yards were something that was approved in this planned unit development. This has a sixteen foot total. So one side could be small with the other side large, or it could be evened out. And the lots turn out actually to be quite sizable, but there was no minimum required. And the lot coverage, again, is meeting code here with the forty-five. And then the last one that we had kind of seen and were intrigued by, particularly because of the interesting architecture, but it's, and I think I got it typed in my, in my memo, but it's the Nook at Britton Wood, which is part of Jerome Village in Jerome Township. And this is a Bob Webb development. And they call it simplified living. So it is also an empty nester type product with, with first floor masters. And it's, it's ranch, a ranch with a loft seemingly. And it's really only eight houses on this cul-de-sac. And we, I've looked everywhere. I cannot find a development text for, for this neighborhood or for Jerome Village in and of itself. The smallest lot here is almost at the bulb of the cul-de-sac. I think it was, I don't remember off the top of my head. It was a little less than two tenths of an acre, I believe. And I measured that side yard setback for that particular lot as best I could. I think it's five. But they have done a great job with the house design that they can fit a side loaded garage here, even though the lots are, some of the lots are smaller. So there must also be something in there where, where the driveway setback doesn't have to be maybe as wide. And they also permit detached garages. So that second lot in, it's kind of hard to see here, but that second lot in has a detached garage and a side load garage. So they can actually fit three garages on this particular lot because they have this detached, detached garage right behind. And that is about, I think it's ten feet away from that property line. So with that, we outlined some discussion questions and maybe some guidance for staff as to what other information you would want or what, yeah, really, what direction you want to go. yeah, really, what direction you want to go next. We didn't really expect you to make a recommendation here tonight to city council. But that is, that is your task, and we want to help you, obviously, achieve that and wanted some guidance from you all as to, as to how to do that. So with that, that concludes my presentation. We did get public comments, and Jenny had offered to, to share that. So I will stop sharing my screen right now and give it over to Jenny.
Thank you. I know that's putting together. All right, Jenny, if you want to read in public comment.
I'm happy to do that. Do you all want to be able to see it as well, or you just want me to go ahead and read it?
It, it might be nice to have it on the video so that people, as they're reviewing, they can see as well.
Okay, can you see that? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I hope. Okay. All right, I'm all, everybody's a little nervous at this point. Okay. So the first one is from John Mileci. He is with BIA, and he provided his information to us to read. So, "Dear members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, on behalf of the Building Industry Association of Central Ohio, you are to be commended for your interest in reviewing and considering the circumstances of the current housing market and residential development in Dublin. The interest in your residents, our customers, do evolve, and we applaud communities when they consider changing demands of residents in the context of the regulations that are in place to reflect the community values. The BIA represents over 800 members in central Ohio who develop, build, and provide all of the essential support services for the residential market, housing market in Dublin and our region. In general demographics, example, smaller household size, later-in-life household formation, varying age cohort sizes, combined with personal preferences such as walkability, time allocation changes, work from home, to cause changes in the concepts of the homes that residents desire. Changes in customer demand results in some alterations that can be directly accommodated with existing regulation, existing regulatory structures. However, some cannot be addressed due to restrictions in place related to lot size, side yard setback, lot coverage, or densities. The evolving central Ohio housing market reflects the changing preferences of customers. Strong valuations in areas with more traditional standards are beginning to be rivaled by increasing values that can be seen in areas with smaller lot sizes, side yards, setbacks, et cetera, that result in higher densities than were previously the norm in many communities. Should the planning commission's informal conversations evolve into considerations of changes for Dublin, the BIA is certainly ready to help assist the commission and bring forth members of the residential construction industry and information to help inform your decision-making for Dublin's future. Again, thank you for your consideration to these issues. Please do not hesitate to contact me if you believe the BIA can be any assistance in your work. Regards, John Mileci, Executive Director of the BIA of Central Ohio." I think one more from Jim Lipnose. He is with the Homewood Corporation. "This is a great idea to conduct an informal discussion on residential development patterns. I am a local developer and builder, both in and out of the city of Dublin, and have firsthand accounts of what potential homeowners desire. Quite simply, it is not the same home or lifestyle that we grew up in, and it takes a bit of perspective to understand the new lifestyle. 15 years ago, it was the McMansions and the two-story great room. However, today's buyer is much more particular in their wants and needs. Today's lifestyle is demanding. Typically, both adults in the home will be working, and time is valuable. Large yards are a burden and not integral to their lifestyle. Maintenance-free exteriors are in high demand. Today's buyers are willing to spend their money on things they value, and that is typically on the interior of the home. Home offices are in high demand, and since the pandemic, are almost mandatory. There is a high probability that more and more people will be working from their homes and filing their taxes as such. From my experience, and I know everybody says we are not against density, but the fact remains that the buyers value what will make their life more convenient and free up more of their time. By allowing smaller lots and setbacks and increasing lot coverage, the cost of a lot will decrease, and the amount of burden on the service department will decrease, and the buyer will put that money into their home, particularly the interior where they live. I appreciate your willingness to gather feedback from the builders and developers and would be happy to discuss any of these topics with you individually. Thank you."
Thank you for reading that in. That's very much appreciated. All right, at this time, looking for comments, and Warren, because you hold a very special place on this commission. I imagine, and Christina and I had talked earlier, and we imagine that this would be a walk down memory lane for you. So a lot of these developments, you probably saw multiple times. A lot of these developers you've worked with for decades. So I'd like to kick it off with you to get your comments, your feedback, your insight, and most of all, your, your education experience based on what you've seen over the years and how you think our code looks now and where we go from here.
Hey, I, I will say that I appreciate it. And, and obviously, I, I have been on the board accumulatively with some breaks for over 40 years. And, and I've seen a lot of change in 40 years. And it's true with the two letters said that people's desires are different. However, through the years, we've made some mistakes. And I painfully saw a couple of them that Claudia showed. And, and when you have to put the air conditioner on the other guy's property, I think it was a mistake. Dublin is known for being green. And, and I, I get more compliments when people come from out of town about our green spaces. And I think that there's nothing wrong with, with having denser development. And we've tried that and failed in some cases and won in some cases. But we also, the, the, we had a program called WOW, where we had huge setbacks. You can see those on, on Bram Road going toward Jerome, where we have 100-foot setbacks, in some cases even more. And then we had, we had smaller lots. I think the problem is, in, in many cases, the developers now want the smaller lots, but they're not willing to give the, the, the green space. And I think that in my notes, I went through this and I, I wrote down that small lots are okay, but, but we, we still need the green space. So, so open areas and open spaces become even more important. And then they'll say, well, the people, the, the customer doesn't want the burden of maintaining a yard. They don't have to have the burden. We can have open space that is, is controlled by the HOA. And, 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 and other parts of the country, especially the south, that's really common. And, and you still get the beauty of the green space and the feeling of the open space without the burden on the, on the mowing grass and burden on the customer. So I, I think Dublin's done an incredible job through the years, and I'm really proud to be part of that. But I, I, I think that, that there are some changes in what people want, but I think it shouldn't be because of economics. We want smaller lots so we can jam more property on, more houses on the land. Thus, 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 the developer has less cost. And he supposedly passes that back to the homeowner. I haven't seen it being passed back lately, if you've seen the prices of houses. So, so Rebecca, I appreciate the time to talk about it, but I think that, that all in all, we've done a good job. But I think there, I did see some mistakes that we made. And, and I voted against the hamlet, by the way, Claudia. And, and that was, that was my first week back, I think. And, and, and so I, I, I think that this, this P and Z has done a tremendous job in what they've done. But I, I think that we still need the green space. That's what Dublin is. And you, we, we, I remember when we, we first had the idea of the Bridge Street, Bridge Park. And, and we said, we, we had consultants that were paid a lot of money to tell us that we want to make sure that is, is not, doesn't become a huge part of Dublin, but a small part of Dublin and, and confined to a district. And because the, the, the open space of Dublin is love-so by people, and, 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 and that, it's a big reason people move here. So I, I think that small lots, more open space is my, my feeling. Okay, but.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Ms. Kennedy, how about we go to you next?
Yes, thank you. I just want to say amen to a lot of what Warren said. Warren, first of all, I have learned so much from you over the years. I look back and I saw some of the mistakes or missteps, and I cringed a little bit as we were going through Claudia's presentation. Because generally, I agree with you that, you know, we need to help maintain the Dublin character. And the Dublin character to me is, is green and it's open space. And it's not, I can reach out my kitchen window and touch my neighbor's house. That's not what I want, and that's not what I, that's not what I think our residents want to see, for the most part. I just want to say that a first-floor master does not equal an empty nester because I live in a first-floor master, which I bought when I was in my twenties. And I've learned that lesson. When they come to us and say, oh, it's a first-floor master. We're going to attract empty nesters. That is not necessarily the case. So that's a lesson learned for me, I think, in some of the recent cases that we've seen. I just want to say that generally speaking, I am not in favor of the more highly dense, packed residencies that we've seen in some of the case studies that Claudia brought to us today. And I, I know that I'll take this as a, as a homework for myself to push back on the green space for the future cases that we see to ensure that we're, we're maintaining that outdoor, outdoor feel and outdoor space. I know with COVID hitting, it's definitely changed my values and perspective. I've never used my backyard or back patio as much as I have in recent times. So I value green space, and I think our residents do too. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Grimes, how about we head over to you?
I think that Riviera is a pretty good representation of a good mixture, lots of green space, diverse choices in all little neighborhoods here and there. I, I like that development. I am a little reluctant to see everything jammed together in a large scale. So I think I would really not like to see too many houses too packed together. I've done a lot of walking in Oak Park, and they're really tight in, in there. That's kind of close for those size houses, although they're, they're very beautiful. They're well-done. But I, you know, that's not my style either. I, I need more elbow room than that. So if you, it's a scope and the size and the scale. You know, you've got to fit it with the terrain, and you've got to, you know, and of course, the developer's got to put the money up, and what do they think's going to sell? And it sounds like with the younger people, they're looking for that value. So I think we have to be sensitive to that. But I, you know, there's, there's still, we're fortunate to have plenty more land, to have a diverse range of products and in different areas. I just think that you've got to watch out for too much of one type in an area. You could oversaturate and not give people the choices they want. So green space, I love the green space, absolutely. But how much do you trade off on that? How many did you put, pack together? So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Ms. Fox?
You know, this is a, this is a really interesting conversation because on the one hand, the American Planning Association would say to you that we need to retrofit suburbia because people are changing their lifestyles, and they want to move to more urban areas. They want to walk. They want to know their neighbors. The suburban, this is, this is, this is a theory that is that the suburban home, single-family home on the quarter-acre lot, is not what's going into the future. And I think there's some credibility to that. On the other hand, what is it about the existing dense development that we're now having this conversation about that we don't like? Because the argument by the builders is this is what everybody wants. So why do we feel uncomfortable out on Highland Croix with dense and denser developments all squeezed together? So, so I guess my, the way I look at it is, I think part of the reason we're uncomfortable is because the public realm, the area around these, around these dense homes, don't invite that walkability, that connectivity. We allow green space, but it isn't always necessary functional green space. It's just green space. Whereas in the historic district where I live, it's very walkable. People are much tighter, but the public realm is active, working, connected. It has, it has tree scapes. It has street scapes. It has something going on. But when you put these dense areas out in the outer aspects of the city where all of those other elements don't exist, it seems constrained and unnatural. So I guess my question would be, what's the trade-off that the city is, that we're willing the citizens to give for a higher density, closer units, if we don't have the other part that balances and makes it worthwhile doing that? I mean, I feel like we say, okay, we'll get 100-foot setback. Well, nobody walks that because you've seen that nobody wants to cut through their neighborhood. You know how we're trying to get sidewalks from one neighborhood to the other? Nobody wants it. They don't want to make the, the little fountain area. We have to push for benches. We have to foot push for the public realm that makes these neighborhoods really nurturing and livable. And I think that's where, to me, the push-pull is. We're giving away this density, the land, but we're not getting anything that makes living in that area really enjoyable. But I do know that there are lots of people who want to live in these smaller homes, and they love the community that these areas give, the, the community center, the pool. So, so people are moving to smaller ones, and they love community. But what does community look like in the, in the design of that development? What does community look like? What is that streetscape, that connectivity, ability to walk, bike, all of that? What are we trading? I guess that would be my question. So.
Thank you, Jane. Mr. Subalak?
So there's a wealth of good comments by all my fellow commissioners. Kudos. You guys never disappoint. I am struggling with, how about this? The, the letter submitted by the gentleman from the BIA, right? He touched on a wealth of basically macro-demographic changes, right? He wasn't necessarily putting his finger on that, but he was kind of alluding to it. And some of those things are, we, we know they're happening out in the world. Baby boomers are becoming empty nesters. Millennials are sliding through the, through the age, the family start age band. And oh, by the way, relative to everything that's happened out in the world, millennials have, are having less kids, doing it later. Those two things might come and come together, right, based on all this stuff. And so there's, there are these very real sort of shifts in all this, these macro shifts. And then I, you know, I sit here and I debate, well, do we, do we subscribe to that? Do we subscribe and commit and, and move towards a very substantial change to what we have been in order to increase our density, right? Because those shifts are, shifts are occurring? Or do we kind of stay who we, who we are and who we've been? Because essentially, once we cut this stuff up, once we cut up our land and once we build stuff on it, it's kind of, it stays in large part, kind of cut up that way and kind of, you know, I mean, stays in large part that rhythm of density, albeit sort of rotated through the years. I, I don't know what the answer is. I'm off the cuff. I, I think I agree. Warren, you touched on it. The greenscape, the green space is important. How that weaves through a community is important. I, I actually think it's interesting because some of our examples, like the conservation design as a, as a concept, right? Oak Park is, if we step back from what it is, fundamentally, it's 50% of that entire land area is left to green space and park space, which on an island is. Which on an island is interesting and and therein, then you cluster the cluster the parcels and they become a little more intense in the process. But from standing on the street there at Jerome High School, it's all green space right now. And and Ballantre is this odd little like cluster of stuff in a field, right? And it's so it just doesn't, the context of that matters. The idea of it was good, the context of it matters. And if we did conservation design across the entire city, we would have these clusters, these sort of a little more intense intensity clusters and this great green space between. And that might all start start to become connective green space tissue throughout the entire city, right? Like it's, it's good o- o- on the surface. I just, I I think we probably all agree there somewhere in there relative to some other factors. That's not my favorite in the city. Um, I I might, I know, uh, staff, you're asking, how do we, how do we work towards a better understanding of this and not simply opine, right? I I I wonder if, we've obviously looked at, we've obviously looked at a wealth of our examples. I wonder if it's, there's merit to, if we are to consider what the macro demographic trends are and some of that stuff, how do we get a good sense of that? Is it from this gentleman who offered? Is it from a series of those gentlemen, right? To to really unwrap our heads around that background information? And whether or not we do or don't subscribe to it, whether or not we change who we are, right? Or or not, they might walk into New Albany and tell New Albany that picket fences are out, right? That their fences are out and New Albany has to decide, are we committing? Are we subscribing to that? Are we staying the course with who we are? Because that trend might come and go. Uh, I I think so, you know, is there merit to getting a a deeper dive on a wealth of the macro trends that we don't totally understand? And we we just barely scratched the surface on. Is there merit to seeing examples of, right, again, to the point of we saw saw a wealth of examples, some were better than others. But is there a merit to, if we're, if we were to entertain something like a uh, a little bit of a tighter, more dense, more intense style in residential, are there examples of that outside the world, outside in, outside of Dublin? Do we see what the list of good examples of that are? That then we can draw conclusions from, you know, I mean, what do they have, what do they have in common? And I I'm saying that I I I don't mean to be making work for for anybody, but these might be some of the ways I I might want to try and digest this issue to really land on uh, how I stand and how I feel about it and what's best for the city, those types of things. And so, um, I I don't know if that list of good examples out in the world is something that the planners are tuned into relative to your profession, right, and career? Those types of things. There are, I think there are, historically, when we've seen our list of these things, the Oak Parks or I'm forget Oak Park, actually, that when we've seen and talked about the list of these empty nester communities, which are a little bit different and maybe warrant a little bit of a different feel and coverage. I feel like we've always had the conversation about there's, there is need for those things. There is need for some of it, pockets of it. There is a, that begs a question, how much is enough? How much is too much? Right? Uh, that type of, that type of understanding as well. There are going to be projects that come in. I think we are gonna, we are going to to frown upon and there's going to be projects that are seem really right for the context and those types of things. So that's a different, that's sort of our our Dublin review of any of these case studies, but I think that kind of plays into this as well. And much like the context of Oak Park, the concept is great. Sitting out in the middle of a field at present, it doesn't quite make as much sense because it just looks like, you know, it got hard pressed together and those types of things. So, um, there's a lot here. I don't know that, obviously, it's a conversation we need to have and foster. I don't know that we can close this gap quickly on, right, our on a new tra- trajectory, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Supalack. Mr. Schneer.
You know, we all bring our own experiences and I I have to say biases to to all our conversations. So I'll, I'll start with mine as, as someone who's in the process of going from two point seven acres in Muirfield to point two five acres in downtown Dublin, I sort of get this. And I I see, I see both sides, you know, of this. One of the attributes of Dublin that I think we we all implicitly realize is, is the diversity of housing stock. We have beyond McMansions and we have uh, small starter homes. One thing that that characterizes virtually all of it, putting aside our nuisance discussion a little earlier, is the quality of the housing stock. And I I think Warren's comments were well placed for many reasons. And one is that small lots don't necessarily mean poor quality or inexpensive homes. And people make choice, are making choices as we're seeing these macro trends. They don't want the hassle, but they do want the quality. A concern that I would have is if we start moving towards the the setback lot coverage issues too much, we get the green space, but at a cost that we get smaller houses and smaller houses, perhaps less expensive houses, maybe we want some of those, but we then exclude the ability to have very nice homes that people will want to spend money on, on the, on smaller lots. I think Warren, you know, the 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 trend that we're talking about is the way you do that is permit those smaller, larger homes on smaller lots, but you compensate on the green space by having a dedicated green space. And to to Jane's point, the, you know, the the suburban walkability versus the urban walkability, which we're looking at accommodates that. So if you have quality prospective home buyers who are willing to put money into their home, they're going to pay for the lot because they have to pay that, because they're paying their pro rata share of the green space. I think you'd have really exciting possibilities. I, uh, Mark's point, like, how do we get there? Uh, again, without causing a lot of work, I'd love to see some best practices. I mean, we've seen, I, you know, we all used to travel, you know, and we've been to places. You know, there's, even in places, uh, even in Naples, uh, you know, Florida, there are, you know, pocket areas with very nice homes on very small lots with very little green space, but dedicated green space elsewhere. It's a lifestyle choice. So, um, you know, as we drive around even central Ohio, I'm not sure we can see that firsthand. I mean, I don't know. I if somebody can tell me where to go, I'd love to see it. But, um, you know, through professional organizations or whatever, if you can share some resources with us, um, that would help me. It would, it would help educate me on what the heart of the possible is because my vision is, you know, that wide and and we're not the first community, you know, to deal with this at all. I I think we just have the advantage of having the flexibility to deal with it the way we want to deal with it and not have it pushed on us by, you know, one gigantic land developer. So that, those are my suggestions.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. I'll try to keep my comments brief. I I echo a lot of what my fellow commissioners have said. I, in my previous life, I was on a city council that was where Dublin was thirty years ago. And so we experienced tremendous growth, triple digit every year growth. And we got to kind of carve what the environment was going to be. And what we heard from developers was exactly what we heard from developers tonight. Lifestyle choices are changing. This is what people want. But then we had a a plethora of inventory of one type of house. And so, uh, I appreciate Mr. Schneer's, he commented on it, Mr. Fishman, Ms. Kennedy. Everyone commented on, there is a place, we want some higher density locations. To Jane's point, higher density and clustering works when it engages with the surrounding area. So if we're building a subdivision that is off on Highland Croy, uh, around nothing, so I'm not even talking any specific development, but Highland Croy next to a park. And then we add in clustered open space and nobody uses it. It, we we can't wonder why because it's not engaging. It's an open field. It's a, it's a fountain that you can walk around. Well, there's only so many times you can walk around the same fountain before you're not going to walk around it anymore. And so, understanding the right place for the right type of clustering and looking long term and understanding that what we build now is probably going to exist the next twenty, thirty, forty years before it's redeveloped. And not counting on the redevelopment while the the commercial will come in. A commercial maybe, and Oak Park is an example of this, the commercial may never come. So making sure that we have that forward thinking. One of the things that is an actual application that I that I appreciated from the presentation was, we know when applications come forward, if the minimum lot side, uh, side yard is six feet, a lot of our houses are going to have six feet side yards. Some of them are going to have six and a half, some of them may even have ten because they're on a corner. But we're not going to see every house have a ten foot side yard. It it just doesn't happen. We've been on the commission long enough and some of us have previous experience to know that that's not really going to happen. But I think one of the ways that we solved it previously was having the and condition. The six foot setback is allowed, but we need a combination of fourteen feet. So we're okay with a six foot setback, but we don't want every house to have a six foot setback. We're okay with a five foot. We had some from the nineties and and that sort of thing that had five foot setbacks. But we ended up with developments, Donacal Cliffs was an excellent example. There was no minimum lot size and yet it came in with big lots. We don't get a lot of those applications. So understanding that we have an identity in Dublin, we want to maintain most of that identity, green space, absolutely. Larger houses, maybe not so much. We want a combination of inventory so that we we meet the demographic, we meet the changing desire that the the Planning Association touts as far as, you know, people want yards they don't have to take care of and and larger homes and, you know, the amenities outdoor. I I'm, I like the green space, I like the trails. But I want my half acre, three quarters of an acre, acre type property. And I I'm, I'm one person who has a very hard time finding property for for a not the McMansion type pricing in Dublin. And having the ability to be in our positions and look forward thinking and push back against the, the developer number one isn't necessarily going to know what developer number two's application said thirty days ago. They might, but they're not going to know everything. And so, and I think it is our responsibility to ensure that we, as the planning commission, are the the second step and staff, I would challenge you that you're the first step in making sure that we have the right products and a a diversity of products to meet the needs of Dublin while maintaining and even elevating our identity as Dublinites. So that that's my soapbox and I I wanted to at least have one takeaway for staff. I like the the and condition, the side yard setback and the combination. So I don't know what the rest of the commission is thinking about any practical applications. Mr. Supalack, I appreciate your your desire to have more, more samples, more examples. We don't know what we don't know. Uh, Mr. Schneer, you touched on this as well. If there are places where we can go, uh, being able to learn from people who have been through this before is always going to help us to make better decisions. Mr. Fishman, you are a gem. There is, we we learn from you and we can rely on your experience. So thank you very much for the time and the dedication that you put forward into not just the planning commission, but the city of Dublin as a whole. Thank you. All right, so, uh, comments, Mr. Fishman, you had one more.
I just got to make one comment. First of all, I I I appreciate the compliment, compliment, but I I will say that I, in forty years, this is one of the finest seven people, six people I I've ever worked with. The intellect, the thought and so on. And one thing we have to keep in mind, and we we said it for years when we, back in this, when we were doing this in the seventies, that 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 it's wonderful to have a group of people that have the interest of Dublin at heart. You're not doing this for the money, that's for sure, okay? But you have to understand two things, that the developers are really as smart as we all think we are and and many of you are, all of you are, okay? And 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 the developer smarter in what he does, okay? And and it it's just like the, every occupation you have, he, his job is to make money developing. And 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 so when you get a letter from a developer and he says, oh, people want small lots, no green space, that's because that's the most profitable way to build a house, okay? So keep that in mind. I I, one other thing I want to say quickly is that that I ride this town, I have almost three thousand miles a year on my bicycle. I ride through the subdivisions, the place is beautiful. But I also will tell you, since COVID started, the bike paths are crowded. I'm the only guy wearing a mask on my bike because I, the 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 people are using our facilities through the subdivisions, the open areas, the fields. And I agree with Mr. Supalack that that it it, some areas don't look great with with, um, uh, a a dense thing and then a block of 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 of, uh, grass around it. But that when we encourage developers to be creative, we get beautiful areas where the green space is integrated. And 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 of course, I hardly ever, I I can't disagree with any of you. I thought that everything you said was fabulous. I I I will pick on Jane and say I hardly ever disagree with her. But but I think she's going to find out that people are using this green space. The 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 the, I live on a quarter lot acre lot, but there's a, there's a, an island in the middle of my court where I can look out there and there's kids that have, or use, have tents on them and hammocks. And 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 we, there's only seven houses on my court. And many times we all walk out and talk to each other and we use the bike path. So so with a quarter acre lot, you can still talk to your neighbors, integrate with the area. And and you should all be really proud of Dublin because I'm telling you, people laugh at me, I'm wearing a mask because you you, it it is crowded now on the bike paths. And and the bikes are people walking and people with kids and strollers. It it's like a movie out there. So I I I just want to express that. And and I, I think that that, not to pick on Rebecca, I think you're do, not to embarrass you, I think you're doing a fabulous job as chairman. I think these meetings are running wonderful and I think we're we're making really good intelligent decisions. And I think that that Dublin's going to see it when I'm dead, okay? So I, that that's all I want to say. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Ms. Fox.
Okay, so I just want to clarify, Warren, that I'm not of any green space at all. What I, what I, I think that one of the things that, uh, and I totally agree with all of you. I I definitely would like to see some best practices and some, some developments that, um, are exemplary. But I think that there's one thing that keeps floating to the surface. It floated to the surface when the Convention Visitors Bureau brought two hundred people together and asked them what they loved about Dublin. And they would tell you that it's the naturalness, the green space, the, um, the friendliness of the people. Everybody in every planning magazine that I'm sure Claudia has ever read, everybody wants the same thing. They want a beautiful, natural environment around them. They want social connectivity with the people that they live near. They want to be able to find some refuge when they go home. So as we try to decide how we're going to diversify our housing or allow denser housing, I think the other thing that we can't let go of is that all of the natural, lovely, uh, green spaces and trees and amenities have to be truly integrated in every development so that every time we say yes to a housing development, it comes with the balance of all the things that make living there worthwhile. And sometimes we give up on that too easily for the building when we really need to make sure that it's a complete picture of of a place to live. Not just whether or not they're close together or how high they are, how much lot coverage. Is this a place that we'd all want to live for the next fifty years? Because it's so well designed. So that's what I'm hoping we can come up with, the answer to that one. But I this is the most fun I've had. The God on council, I love this planning group, it's great, it's great.
Thank you, Ms. Fox, Ms. Husack. So we've had a lot of discussion tonight. I I don't know if we gave you enough direction to even get started. I think we have, and I know that staff works diligently day in, day out to ensure that Dublin is also a. A a place that you are proud to call work and home on occasion. So so thank you for your.
It is not a daunting task to provide you all with examples and. Places to drive through locally or. Or look up online. We have some ideas, we've traveled with council. Many years ago, but to two different places that are certainly worth discussing more and looking at how they've grown up over the last. 12 years, I think it was. So we can certainly do that. I would like to get some feedback perhaps on. Mark was the one that brought up that, yes, he would potentially be interested in hearing from either developers or the BIA, since they had offered it. Is that something that everybody else would want to consider or?
I'm not necessarily advocating for. How about this? I don't know who the right source is. There is expertise. Warren touched on it. He touched on the developers know what they're doing and that they do know what they're doing. They're here to make they're here to make money. But there are experts around this. There are experts in your planning, in your planning circles who do know these demographics, who have a sense for them. And and. I don't know who those experts are, but. If they are available, if they're out there, perhaps it'd be worth us hearing from them. I mean, I think we're we're all lining around green space is important, its integration is important. We're trying to fine tune. How do we do that relative to some of these potential? Potential residential. Developments that are going to be continue to come at us.
And and just back to fundamentals for a moment. I think that this is our discussion about green space and increasing density and clustering and all of that kind of thing. That's that's to me, that's fundamental to a P U D. You know, we have basic code. We are a suburban area, for better for worse, we do have a downtown area, but a lot of. A lot of Dublin is suburban. So you can't fault us for having a lot of quarter acre lots, half acre lots with, you know, single family homes on them. We have diversified over the years, even, you know. Decades ago, you look at Crawell, you look at some of the other condo products and and we did diversify and we learned our lesson. Some of them are really good and some of them are not so good. But going back to the fundamentals of PUDs, PUDs gives us the flexibility. To allow for larger homes on smaller lots, increased lot coverage, reduced setbacks, all of those things, but we have to know our balance. So Warren touched on air conditionings on other people, air conditioning units on others lots. Lesson learned, probably bad idea. No storage for a garbage can, but we we require it behind the front plane of the house, hidden from view. Lesson learned. So making sure that we address those and allowing ourselves the flexibility, to Jane's point, when the right product comes in and we can help finesse that. Into a great product. Allowing us the flexibility to apply a PUD. And and get an even better product where everyone, everybody wins, the developer wins, the homeowners win, the city win, the neighborhoods win. That's really what we're looking for. So rather than. I think it's easier to take the PUD and say, okay, well, the PUD allows us to reduce setbacks and yeah, we'll put a little bit bigger park. And it also makes me crazy, we'll dedicate the land and then the city will build the park. So essentially the developer gets all the benefit and the city has to pay and maintain all of the the open space that should have been the compromise for getting the the other lots. Really going back to those fundamentals and applying the vehicles we already have and identifying the vehicles that we need. To ensure that we establish, maintain in those newer areas of Dublin, the identity that we want. Ms. Kennedy.
Just one last thought, and and Mark made me think of this. We want to bring in someone who has expertise who's unbiased, or I think that's what Mark was really getting at, someone that doesn't have a vested financial interest in pushing an agenda. Whether that's a faculty member at Ohio State who studies economic development or something, something. There has to be someone in that space locally or through your connections, Claudia. But I think that point has been belabored. My next and final comment is, and I was really disappointed to see that there was no public comment that came in from our residents. Because I think that's really the missing piece here. And not to say that all new development will be empty nesters transitioning from big mansions into smaller homes. But I would be really curious to hear if there's a pulse on what our residents think about. About developments and about the different housing options. If there was a voice there that we could tap into and maybe that's a question for you, Claudia, is there data that already exists? Has there been a a climate pulse that's been done in recent times that we could tap into? Something that could give us some additional perspective from a resident perspective.
I believe I I don't know of anything on this particular subject.
Okay, shoot, well, I don't know what my 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 question might be. Is there a way that we could consider? Trying to find some pieces of data just to support or or a public forum of some sort like we've done in the past. I think public public feedback could be valuable as well.
Ms. Fox, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Christian, that that is, that's really a great idea because many of us have lived on a suburban lot. But as Lance was saying, he's moving into something smaller. Let's talk to some people who are in these denser developments and find out what they like about them and what they don't like about them. They probably know what's missing that we don't know what's missing or what they would have liked to have seen us. You know, ask the developer to do. And I have a girlfriend that lives in one of the ones off of Manly. She absolutely loves her home. She loves her small patio. She loves the community that is gathered there. They gather at the community center, they're at the pool, she's made new friends. I see the benefits of of diverse housing like this. I'm just wondering aesthetically, what are we missing? You know, like timelessness, what are we missing? And maybe they can help us with that. I think that's a great idea, great idea.
Mr. Fishman.
Again, I love her, whatever I said, and I think Jane just hit it. But you can, I think it's a misnomer. You can have very small houses that are quality. If you want to go south of Lane in Upper Arlington and see four sided English Tudor houses that are 1,500 square feet. The streets are beautiful. The houses are beautiful and some of them are 85 years old. Okay, so I I I think that 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 that's kind of a misnomer, but I think we have room for all types of communities. And I think that that that. If they're integrated, like Mr. Fablek said, in into into the the green space and 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 what what Jane said, that usable green space. But also open green space. When I ride my bike on these bike paths and I talk to people, I'm a bicycle ambassador, so if some somebody's chain comes off, I stop and help them. They love it and 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 they love the green space. And even if they don't live in an area that has the green space, if they're in a condo project, they're out on our bike paths and they're and and they're whining and they love the green space around them. My my neighbor made a comment, she lives in the Muse in Muirfield and and it's right down the street. And she said, my grandkids think I own all that land where the lake and pool are, okay? And 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 we love it. Okay, so so I I I think that everybody said something great tonight, but I and I think that but don't think you can't build a small house and make it beautiful. Or a group of small houses with four sided architecture, quality materials and great landscaping and and great spacing in the green space. You can and 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 go to Hilton Head. And and places like that and you'll see it. So anyway, that's my last comment. Thanks for all the time to talk tonight.
All right, so Ms. Husack, I think what you're hearing is quality and diversity and looking for community feedback. Especially to Jane's point, from the more urban type environment. What do they have that they love and what do they don't have have that they wish they had? Additionally, a little bit more flexibility or utilizing the flexibility that we have in our current code a little bit differently. And ultimately, we learn and we grow and we change every day and hopefully we're always looking to get better. Thank you very much. I know that was an effort putting everything together and I'm sure it was somewhat entertaining to you to look back at those developments over the years.
I did not, I was not a plan on all of them.
Got it. All right, that was our informal review. I do not believe I need the motion. And we are up to communications. So does anyone have communications for this evening? Just a reminder, we will not be here next meeting. Christina Kennedy is going to chair the meeting for me.
And we're actually getting together tomorrow to review that agenda. We may not actually need that meeting because. We the 17th is where everybody is shooting for.
They knew Rebecca was going to be gone.
Now they're all changing to go on the third.
Yeah, sometimes it's just a strange the way how they submit and how it works, so.
All right, well, with no further communications. Thank you, everyone. I know we've said that a lot tonight. You guys are rock stars, so thank you very much.